I'd like to call a meeting order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with all its justice for all.
And tonight, the invocation will be given by a fast driver, good friend Jamal Brown from United Church of Christ here in Holly Springs. You're on, sir. Come on down. You didn't speak coming here, did you? Did you speak coming here?
I'm not going to say it.
You're on, partner.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
If we'll bow his with a quick word of prayer and invocation. Our Father and our God, we give you thanks, we give you glory, we give you praise. We thank you for who you are, and we thank you for the abundance of your mercies. Father, we ask, oh God, now as we deal with the town business, that you would give us the wisdom, discernment, and insight to be deal justly, fairly, and adequately. Bless now, Lord God, the leaders in the township of Holly Springs, its citizens, and may you receive the glory from this small town, but one that you've placed. We give you thanks, praise, glory, and honor, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
All right.
I remember for adjustment approval, the July 17th, 2018 meeting agenda, Mayor Portman. Hello?
Are there any changes, Johnny?
Wait a minute, we're getting there. I don't think there is.
Motion to adopt the July 17th, 2018 meeting agenda with the following changes. Remove from consent agenda item 8H, Triangle Water Supply Planning Regions Agreement.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. I remember five is public comment, want to ask a favor. Not yet. And we'll open a public hearing, our public comments with Gerald Holloman is here again. Gerald, where are you?
I'm here, guys.
Come on down. Time doesn't start until you get down to the podium.
Good to see you all.
I hear you. You got all the time you need.
I was unable to attend Parish Hamon's funeral, but I want to tell you all, he's one of the founding fathers of this town.
Yep.
Starting in 1983, 84. And we served together, and we traveled many times to Washington, DC. We got to be first-name bases with the congressman in both houses. And they helped us out a whole lot. And a lot of credit goes to him. He stuck with the town. And we worked together in various organizations here. And he was a real person that was really for this thing. What I want to talk to you about, other than how much I thought of him, I took a ride the other day, and when I was mayor, they built a nuclear power plant down there. About too far from Holly Springs Road. And I'm wondering, we had the drill there. We had the highway patrol, we had everybody down here having a mock drill for evacuation. That's probably in 84, 85. Plant's still there. We're building houses within three miles of that plant now. And I'm wondering, has that plant got so safe, we don't need to have an evacuation drill anymore? I'm wondering, they tell me always safe now. Well, I don't know how safe it is. It's a nuclear-powered power plant. So I'm a little concerned about it. And I rode down there, and the town's building houses now about four miles from the power plant, if you go down Neighbor Ferry Road. And I'm kind of concerned about is those cars are built, it's going to build up. How are they going to get out of there on a two-lane road if we have a problem at the nuclear power plant? And, you know, I grew up in this town, I love this town, and I care about this town. I moved here when I was six years old. And been here ever since. After years, I went away. But I am concerned about this future. It's growing fast, and it takes a lot of town expense to keep this growth going. I went to Washington, DC, probably weren't any elected officials in this country, but I found that that's where the money was. And we raised seventeen and a half million dollars grant funds in about five, six years while I was here, which we made all the improvements. When I came, moved back in 1980, there were probably six hundred people here, no indoor plumbing, a little water system, to hand-rip the bills and maybe thirty, forty people. Houses that had outdoor toilets, no indoor plumbing. And I came by and said, what is this? But we changed it all in the next ten years. And now, I wish you would go where the money is, the big money. I learned it's not what you know, it's who you know. And each time you need money, go to Washington, DC, and sit down with the through the telephone and everything. If they don't give it to you that time, go back again. And keep going back, because you'll eventually get the money. This is probably the last time you're going to see me down here, because I had a dog trip in the yard, hurt my neck, so I'm trying to get away from there. I love this town, you guys, and I thank the world that I spent fourteen, fourteen or seventeen years here, sitting behind it. Well, I started out in this, I think, a three-room house, so all tore down. That was where I first started out as town manager. That was a block building down next to what used to be the bank. Thank you, have a nice day. Have a...
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you for everything you've done.
And you come back anyway.
Yeah.
We want you to come back anyway. You know that. You better come back to my office, too.
If you don't feel like going, you can go to Washington, DC.
All right, Gerald. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Gerald.
Next is Kathryn Lofton. Think I said that right? Is that close? Okay. All right, thank you.
Got it.
All right, there you go.
So I am Dr. Kathryn Lofton. I am a North Carolina native, born, raised, and educated here. I live at 10712 Penny Road, Cary, North Carolina.
We want to hold that against you.
Thank you, sir. For over a decade, I have been a global consultant in place science, the study of practice of why people love where they live, and why loving where you live matters to people, places, and local economies. I have also been very active here in Holly Springs Theater. You may have seen me across the street at A Bad Year for Tomatoes, Always a Bridesmaid, God's Favorite, Holly Springs, Got Talent, and Murder.
And you are terrific.
And a little show that changed a town called Finding Patience.
Yep, yep.
I approached Angie Staley, playwright and director of Finding Patience, with my interest in starting a production company that would combine place science with local history productions, to tell the stories of place on stage and screen, and through community engagement events. Long story short, Amazing Place Production had its launch party last month at the historic Adams Farm, privately owned by David Adams and his family, who is here this evening, in partnership with Angie, Bruce Ackerman, and about twenty-five of our local volunteers, including Councilwoman Kelly. We had hundreds come out and enjoy local land tours given by Mr. Adams, which included the original wagon road of Holly Springs, which is on his property, a photo booth using historical costumes, live bluegrass music, and my favorite, a community square dance lesson given by a local public school teacher. Bella Grace, please hand out what I want to share with the council from that event. I was honored that Governor Cooper proclaimed June 23rd our launch event date, Tell Your Place's Story Day in North Carolina. And I would like to read you that proclamation. Whereas our places make us who we are, whereas they influence who we become, what we believe, where we thrive, and how we live. Whereas our place, our life happens in a place. It is not backdrop or scenery, but the main character in our lives. Whereas we don't always know our places, their history, and the experiences of all its residents, past, present, and future. And whereas Tell Your Place's Story Day is an opportunity to learn and tell the stories of our place, be it a home, neighborhood, farm, town, city, state, or even country, so that we can honor places and their journeys as they continue to enrich, inform, and guide our lives. Now therefore, I Roy Cooper, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 23rd as Tell Your Place's Story Day in North Carolina, and commend its observance to all citizens. We hope that you will continue to watch our progress with Amazing Place Productions as we tell the stories of this place and those around us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathryn.
Thank you.
And you did do a good job.
Thank you.
Now, was that your sister with you?
Oh, yes. This is my daughter, Isabella Grace.
Hi, daughter. How are you? Thanks for covering. And thank you again.
She was also in Patience.
Yeah, she was. I remember that. We'll see you next trip. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathryn.
At this point in time, we'll close public hearing and go to agenda item 6A, something I've been looking forward to. Unmanned air systems implementation pilot program, Aaron Levitt, and I got a little bit of a glimpse of what he's going to do today. So I'm excited. I think he is, too.
Just a little bit.
You're on.
A little bit.
Just a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. I do have some pretty exciting news for the citizens of Holly Springs. Town of Holly Springs is on track to be the first location in the nation to have residential drone deliveries. And what that means is our citizens will have on-demand delivery service from local businesses via drone in their backyard. That's the direction that the program is going in. Now, I have a lot of information to give out tonight. I've tried to boil that down into some consumable bites. But this is pretty informal, so if you do have questions during the presentation, please just holler out. So I just want to start by giving a few drone basics. I'll drone on about that. That'll be the last droning-on joke, I promise. How the town has been utilizing drones currently, the FAA program that we've been selected as a winner in and a participant, that is the UAS Innovation Pilot Program. I'll talk a little bit about our industry partner, FlyTrex. I'll move on to some flight safety and other concerns, talk a little bit about the implementation plan, how the town will benefit. And then finally, we'll conclude with some questions, discussions. This is a public information piece. This is the first of several presentations. So the level of detail I have tonight may be less than there will be in the future. On August 7th, we do have representatives from our industry partner FlyTrex that will be presenting. They will be able to give you detailed information about their proposal. So basically, what are drones? They're also called UAVs or UAS, SUAS. There's many different names, but they're pretty much flying robots equipped with different payloads. And these can be flied manually by a pilot. They can also be flied automatically by a computer system. They carry a variety of different payloads, cameras, sensors, some carry lifesaving equipment, or life jackets, package delivery is the direction we're headed in, and also tools. Currently, all airspace within the country is the jurisdiction of the FAA. So as soon as you lift off above that blade of grass, you're in FAA jurisdiction. There are a few hurdles that we have before we're able to implement this technology to provide deliveries. The first hurdle is visual line of sight. So currently, licensed pilots cannot fly behind where they can see. Drones can fly six miles for a consumer drone, up to hundreds of miles for more professional models. Unfortunately, current laws don't allow people to do that. One of the other hurdles that is not allowed currently are operations over people. And also nighttime operations are not typically allowed. So there's two basic types of drones. Many have probably seen the quadcopter, as shown on the bottom of the screen, the white one. That's actually, the town has two of those. And that has, you know, propellers, kind of operates like a helicopter. It has limited range, like I said, about six miles is a common one. At the top of the screen, you'll see one of our partners on our team, and I'll get into that a little bit more later. That's a fixed-wing drone. Those are able to fly hundreds of miles automatically without being piloted by a human. That one's actually delivering some lifesaving products in Rwanda, where it's difficult to travel. So the Town of Holly Springs has been utilizing drones for some time now. I started back in 14, and started to take my drone and use it on lunches and after work to do a little bit of work that was interesting to me in areas of construction inspection, other applications for the town. As I started kind of using it more and more, interest picked up, and I was able to talk the town into purchasing a drone and starting a program. At this time, I also became licensed through the FAA, and that allowed me to use my license for the town. Previously, it was illegal to use drones for commercial or government purposes without a license. So far, the town has used drones for construction monitoring, engineering design, infrastructure repair, post-disaster assessment, some engineering survey, economic development, and marketing. We've done several videos of our economic sites in town. I started to get a lot of demand from different departments to provide this service, and it was kind of a time crunch for me. So I wanted to go ahead and teach these departments how to fish rather than give them fish. So I created the Drone Users Group, which was designed to walk users through the licensure process and get them legal so they could fly their own drones. This was a twelve-week program. It was one hour per week with some homework time. So far, we've had seven staff members go through the program, and most of those have been licensed. Some of them are still getting ready to be licensed. Okay, so that brings us to this USDOT/FAA/UAS Innovation Pilot Program. So I mentioned the hurdles before. The country sees a definite use for this technology that goes beyond those hurdles. We must conquer those issues. So the DOT created a program through the FAA called the UAS IPP. So this is a three-year program, and the main goal is to safely accelerate UAV integration into the national airspace. So currently, the airspace is used by planes, helicopters, and drones. Drones fly at 400 feet in below altitude. Planes, helicopters should be well above that. In some cases, helicopters are lower. But the main focus of this program is safety, public outreach, and economic development. So there was an executive memo issued in October of 2017. And then quickly after November 2nd, the FAA established the rules of the program. In that same month, the NC DOT has applied as a primary applicant. They're the leader of our team that we're on. In the same month, Holly Springs applied as a secondary applicant. This was just an email I sent in saying, we'd like to be an applicant. At that point, what they do is they took all the secondary applicants, and they put you in a group, and you were able to talk to people to see if you could create a team to leverage your situation to find a primary applicant. We met with FlyTrex, and we thought that was a pretty good relationship. Their technology is focused on suburban delivery. Their technology delivers directly to your backyard, but you need a backyard. It doesn't work in a city environment. So we teamed up and approached DOT, Division of Aviation, about being on their team, and they accepted us. There's maybe a half a dozen operations that they had detailed on their application. So in January, the DOT made their formal application, including us. And then on May 9th, Secretary Chow of the Federal DOT announced there were ten winners out of 150 applications. Of these ten winners, the NC DOT Holly Springs team was selected. From that point, NC DOT met with the FAA at an initial meeting, and that is when the FAA prioritized our project number two. Ahead of us is the Wake Med Project, which is also in the Raleigh area, which is really interesting, and I'm going to talk briefly about that. Since then, Holly Springs has attended our kickoff meeting with our team, and that's where we found out we were prioritized. So let's talk about who are the members of our team. And the primary focus of our team, or our mission statement, is pretty much package delivery. We have lifesaving medical packages and more commercial-type applications. But on our team, we have some heavy hitters. Apple, FlyTrex, Fordham Technologies does anti-drone technology radars. Apple is interested in looking at traffic. Matternet is operational in Switzerland. They're doing medical deliveries, hospital to hospital. Precision Hawk is a leader in the industry. T-Mobile is providing communications. They're pulling out the red carpet for us, working with us, trying to make this work. Wake Med is a big player. Their idea is to be able to transmit sensitive items such as blood, medications, between their facilities via drone. I'll tell you that it's amazing the amount of time you can save when you're not following roads. Within town of Holly Springs, we have about a six-mile delivery radius we're looking at, and they're talking about average delivery time of three minutes. Our other partner that we have is ZipLine. They're currently the fixed-wing operator that I showed you earlier. They are operational in Rwanda. They're delivering medical packages to rural areas, you know, where you might get bit by a snake, need some antivenom delivered, and within 30 minutes, they can get you these lifesaving materials. Some of the other people on our team, Charlotte Durham, Raleigh, Duke University Healthcare, NC State University, they've been a big help. They have ITRI, the Innovative Transportation Research Department. They're doing a lot of testing on drones. It's very interesting what they have to say. The Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority, Town of Cary, Town of Chapel Hill, UNC Healthcare, UPS, and a little town of Holly Springs. Okay, so I've told you a lot of stuff. This is what the FlyTrex system looks like. I'm going to run this video for you, and then we can talk about it. using drones. They've been in the drone game for several years now. What they want to do is be a third party to the whole process. They want to operate in a shopping center or near local businesses. Those local businesses can then bring their packages to FlyTrex, and FlyTrex will deliver said packages. Their platform is designed for suburban environments. They are currently operational in Reykjavik, Iceland. They have a partnership with Aha, which is the Icelandic version of Amazon. Reykjavik's separated by a large body of water, so this cuts, you know, drivers' time down considerably. Their technology is extensive. They're going to be here at the next council meeting, but I can tell you that their drones feature some high-tech technology that's going to overcome some of the concerns people may have. UTM being one of those. That's unmanned traffic management. So that's, when you have several drones in the air, this allows drones to talk to each other, allows one drone to perhaps stop and loiter while another drone passes. It also works with aircraft, and the detect-and-avoid technology is, you know, if there's a something in the way, they can avoid it. Birds, they have the technology to avoid those things. Their technology has programmed flight paths. So we can customize, or they can customize where they fly, how they fly, how they get to a certain location. So by utilizing undeveloped areas and wooded areas, we're able to, you know, set their flight paths to fly over those areas, limiting the time that they're flying over people or over roads. Typically, their drone flies about 160 feet in the air. I'm told that the noise at that altitude is minimal. They're going to come next week hopefully with some relevant information, and something that we can relate to, what we can compare that sound to. At the time of delivery, the drone, the winch would just release the line, and the person would be holding some fishing line, pretty much. You know, but the focus of the whole program is definitely safety. So what's this going to look like? You know, what does this mean for the town? This whole program, the UAS IPP, is a three-year program. We're already a half of a year into it. So in two and a half years, it will be completed. We are required to, when I say we, I mean, DOT is required to interface with the FAA and provide quarterly reports. The FAA is going to be scrutinizing these operations to the highest degree. We all want this to succeed, but we all want it to be safe. And the way the FlyTrex system works is you place an order via your smartphone or tablet, and you'll actually go to a third-party portal. There's some delivery platforms in town that already use a system kind of like this. So you go through this portal, you order your food, and you can actually track your package as it flies through the air and comes to your house. When it gets within one minute of your house, you can receive a text message. You are to accept it if you're there and ready to receive. And then the package is dropped, and the drone flies back to its home. I think there's a lot of concerns out there. Sound, talked a little bit about that, safety. So these drones are industrial drones. They're designed with many redundancies in them. They have six propellers. They only need four to spin, to work, so they could actually lose two engines and still fly safely. The drones can be equipped with parachute systems in case that fails. The parachute would, you know, glide it gently to the ground. Privacy is a big concern. FlyTrex had a pretty genius idea about, you know, just comforting people about privacy, and that is that they do not have cameras on their drones. So all flight data gets uploaded to the T-Mobile cell tower. That information is logged. If something was to happen, you'd go back and look at the flight data. You're not going to have a video. And, you know, the whole operation is going to be described in detail by FlyTrex on October 7th. But they're really approaching this from a crawl, walk, run approach. You know, they're not looking to deliver townwide day one. Day one is going to look very simple. It's It's going to be a drone taking off from a location in town and flying probably not too far. It probably would stay within visual line of sight, actually. It would be delivering to the central area in a neighborhood. And as they improve each step, as the FAA looks at each step and okays the next phase, they're going to implement more features. Multiple takeoff locations could be a possibility. Landing in driveways or backyards is a possibility. But I don't want to get too deep into their program right now. All right, so the implementation plan, FlyTrex will present in two weeks. The Town of Holly Springs, along with NC DOT, is to assist with public information outreach. That's a huge part of this project. We need to get the information out to the public. You know, there's a lot of misconceptions out there about drones, and that's a major direction the program wants to go in. We want to meet with HOAs and residents of the pilot neighborhoods. Ultimately, we need clearance from the FAA, and we'll start with early phases of operations, report back to the FAA before moving forward, and then receive clearance for future phases. Final phase includes deliveries to a major part or a major area of Holly Springs. Not the entire town is covered, but they will present that in the future. I think the big question is why? Why are we doing this? Why do we care? And I think this is really going to bring a national spotlight to Holly Springs, and it's going to really perpetuate the brand and perpetuate Holly Springs as being innovative and high-tech, cutting-edge. It's going to attract citizens, businesses, entrepreneurs, you know. What new businesses will be created using this model? We can only imagine. Business development opportunities for existing local businesses, you know, the Pizza Huts and the big chain restaurants are all working on their drone delivery systems. What this project does, it brings that technology and gives it to the local business owner that can't afford to invest that sort of money in developing a drone program. You know, it's going to have a positive impact on traffic. I don't think it's going to be immediately noticed, but the key is for every drone in the air, there's one less vehicle on the road. Environmentally, emissions on battery-powered vehicles are extremely low. I mean, a drone compared to a delivery truck or a delivery car driving down the road is significantly less. There are implications for future revenue generation. Now, the IPP, the program, I think it's going to, it won't be the first in the world, but it will yield the safest unmanned system in the world. I have no doubt of that. From early meetings, we know that our regulations, our requirements from the FAA are well above and beyond what other countries have been dealing with. And then what other benefits are there? I think it's just unknown at this point. So that pretty much concludes what I have to say. I know it's a lot, but I'm open to any questions. I'm interested in getting concerns, questions.
Yeah, go ahead. So it's mainly right now for commercial use. Have you talked about potentially using it for our police and fire? I'm sure...
Sure. Some of the, you know, there's 10 teams selected across the country. Some of those teams, and they all have multiple operations involved. So the whole program in whole is going to address some of those uses. Police, specifically, there's a lot of information, a lot of hoops that they have to jump through legally. I don't think this program is designed to address that, but as far as flying beyond visual line of sight is a part of every single program that was selected. So that beyond visual line of sight really opens the doors. So it allows us to have, you know, maybe what they call bird's nests. So this is maybe half a dozen locations around town that have drones sitting in boxes. And then when a fire gets called in, the drone automatically takes off to that location and uploads a live feed to the fire chief's iPad. You know, police situations, there's all kinds of uses. Shooter situations, it would definitely be very valuable to get a live upload and aerial perspective on what's happening. So the program is going to, you know, take down these hurdles, which will open the door for a lot of things.
Other questions or comments? I'm excited.
I think it's awesome. Thanks for your commitment to the program and willingness to be innovative and drive us forward.
Thank you.
Great work.
Absolutely. Anything else? Thank you. Looking forward to the next one.
All right.
June 9, AM 7 a.m., public hearing, 2018 transportation bond order. Tina Strop, I think, is coming? Or Bob Jessup? Or both? Or neither one?
Well, I can field it for you. They have the transportation bond that was introduced at the last, I don't know, 45 days ago or so. It's been publicized, and people have the opportunity tonight to tell you whether they feel like the town should even go to a referendum or not. That's kind of it for that show. We'll have the open public hearing tonight, and the Transportation Bond Committee has asked that if we continue to August 7th, make sure that people had an opportunity to do their homework and speak to the question.
So at this time, open public hearing, we have one person signed up. That's Jenny Appleton. Ah, I saw you a minute ago. Come on down. Repeat your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Jenny Appleton, and I reside at 4600 Sunset Lake Road. Can you hear me okay out back there?
Excellent, thank you.
I got the newsletter, and I was concerned about this because it'll be, this will probably be affecting me. The first set of projects would be small, quick turnaround projects, which is a right-turn lane on 55 between Avant Ferry and Main Street. And the second is a right-turn lane on Main Street to Holly Springs Road. What does the town anticipate the cost for these two projects? And is there currently right-of-way to build such, to build those lanes? And what would your projected completion date be? And then going on to the second type of projects, which is widening Holly Springs Road and Sunset Lake Road. Widening: a four-lane highway with a divided median that limits left turns, thus affecting numerous homes, streets, subdivisions, and churches from making left turns. So I'd like to be clear, what parts of Sunset Lake Road does the Town of Holly Springs plan on widening, since parts of Sunset Lake Road are Apex or Fuquay? Now that 540 is proceeding with construction, two locations on Sunset Lake Road will intersect with 540, and there will be a divide in grade, and 540 will financially be responsible for such bridges or tunnels. Currently, the last ramp for 540 is basically at the end of Sunset Lake Road. The completion of the next loop will extend to 40-70 bypass, and its projected completion date is 2022. The extension will reduce the amount of traffic on Sunset Lake Road. If Holly Springs pays to build a four-lane road with a divided median through traffic from Fuquay, will continue to use Sunset Lake Road instead of the toll road. What is the projected completion of widening Sunset Lake Road? How much will it cost? And will it coincide with the completion of 540's grade separation at its two locations that do intersect Sunset Lake Road? Sunset Lake Road was resurfaced in 2016. It is still nice and smooth. Who paid for that resurfacing? Was it Holly Springs residents, or was it NC DOT? And then questions regarding the widening of Holly Springs Road. Where will Holly Springs Road be widened, the start and end point? Because once you cross the 55 bypass, the road is called either New Hill Road or Holly Springs New Hill Road. So the locations where the widening would actually occur. 540 will cross Holly Springs Road as well. Division grade road improvements will be paid for by 540, and there will be an on-ramp for 540 as well that will be paid for by 540. So again, what is the project start date? When do you expect the project to be finished? And will it coincide with the completion of 540's grade separation and the on-ramps onto 540? In May of 2015, Holly Springs Engineering Department stated the funding for major NC DOT roadways, where there was town or NC DOT participation over the past 10 years. The 13 major road projects' total cost was almost $28.5 million, and the town paid for $15 million. If the town paid out $15 million in road projects already, where did the funding come from, and do we really need an increase on our property taxes? Adding a 5-cent increase to property tax rate. Currently, Holly Springs property tax is higher than Apex and Cary. The increase of tax rate will make Holly Springs rate change from .4325 to .4825. Voter approval. The rate increase, when will it go into effect? Will it be for the 2019 property taxes? Will the increase be for one year, or will it be a permanent increase? In 2018, Wake County increased its property tax rate 4 cents, so between both town and county, it will be a 9-cent increase over two years. Raised medians will block existing developments, roads, and driveways for making left turns. Will adequate U-turn accessibility, like the 55 bypass for drivers, be made since the divided median will block roads and driveways? Drivers of large vehicles or vehicles pulling something like a trailer or boat cannot make a U-turn at the Holly Springs Road and Sunset Lake Road intersection. I look at the plans for Sunset Lake Road, and I do see raised divided median is planned for in front of my driveway, so I will be forced to make U-turns on a daily basis. Safety is a concern because the break-in median will be at the entrance of two subdivisions, which is Wood Creek and Fair Oaks. Besides watching for oncoming traffic, I will have to watch for and yield to crossing traffic. The other break-in median will be at the T of Sunset Lake Road and Stevenson, the same safety issue as I mentioned, plus currently, there is not sufficient room to make a U-turn. And my husband sometimes pulls a trailer with his truck, and if a raised divided median is added, there would not be enough room in either location to make a U-turn. Speed: it should be 35 miles per hour. It is a very curvy, it can be very curvy, and there are some blind driveways. I believe drivers drive faster than 45 and are often distracted with cell phones and texting. Already residents have spoke out about the speed. The rest of Sunset Lake Road in Holly Springs Township is 35 miles per hour after the Wood Creek's Lockley entrance. Stevenson Road is 35 miles per hour. I don't understand why all of Sunset Lake Road is not 35 miles per hour. Will we be forced to make U-turns at dangerous intersections and at dangerous speeds? Safety: first responders' response time will be increased with raised divided medians. Medians can only open up 1,200 feet. The extra distance will increase response time, and will there be adequate accessibility for fire trucks to make U-turns? New roads: new development will be adding new roads. Jesse Drive will link 55 and 1010. Edwards Drive will link Sunset with Kildare Farm Road. These new roads will be paid for by developers, and with the new roads, I anticipate a reduce of traffic on Sunset Lake Road. Cost: right-only roads with divided medians cost more than roads with a center U-turn, with a center turn lane, not a center U-turn. Environmentally conscious: encountering three lights in order to go straight, and I'm referring to the intersection of Holly Springs Road and Highway 55, it is not environmentally conscious. It takes longer to get anywhere. It's a bummer if you have to stop at all three lights. Acceleration ruins fuel mileage. Distance traveled minimum increase is 2,400 feet, since the brakes and medians are allowed to open every 1,200 feet. And the result, it takes a long time to get anywhere in Holly Springs. Maintenance: the new raised divided median in front of Lowe's on Holly Springs Road is new and beautiful. Old divided medians in front of Harris Teeter, CVS, Dollar Store, and the BP gas station has dead shrubbery. A center turn lane will not require landscaping upkeep or its costs. Urban lifestyle: I would like to see Holly Springs promote community and connectivity with sidewalks, streetlights, bike lanes, and greenways. Examples include Cary, an established community with such listed urban lifestyle features, and Apex is currently developing. Property values increase every assessment. My Holly Springs property value increased in the 2016 assessment. Holly Springs is receiving an increased amount of revenue from me since the 2016 reassessment. That's about $800 bucks a year, and I expect my property value will go up again in the next assessment, which is 2020. Before a $40 million transportation bond goes to ballot, I would like to see the transportation plan for Holly Springs roads be revised with center turn lanes and bike lanes. You can move the same amount of traffic without the added expenditure of raised median or the cost to maintain, and you don't need to provide U-turn accessibility like the 55 bypass, and you won't have first, and you won't have time issues for first responders. And I think Holly Springs should wait until 540 and its road improvements are completed, and then do a traffic study analysis to see how traffic flows. I suggest to break up the projects, pay for the small, quick turnaround projects, but wait on the cost-saver projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Joanie, do you think we can get that in electronic format? Or, Ms. Appleton, could we get that in electronic format? Because you raised a lot of great questions, and I'm part of the transportation committee where we're looking at those type of things, so that would be great if we could get that.
At this point in time, we're going to leave the public hearing open. Do we need to discuss anything else, Joanie, at this point? Do we still need a motion?
We have the input from Ms. Appleton in the minutes.
I'm sorry?
We just need a motion to continue the, resume the public hearing on August 7th.
There it is, okay. Please.
Motion to approve to continue the public hearing to resume August 7th.
Second. Motion has been made in second茅on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. We'll continue on, and thank you for that very detailed information. Item number 7B, public hearing, 17 REZ05, 1307, and 1309, New Hill Road, Matt Beard. He got the memo, too. Inside joke.
All right, good evening.
All right, good evening. So this petition, we are asking that it actually be continued to the August 7 meeting. The neighborhood meeting report had not been submitted in time. They're planning on having their neighborhood meeting on the 23rd, and having it, having the report back to us the following day, which would allow them to make it to the August 7 meeting.
Correct. Need a motion?
Motion to continue the public hearing. Unopposed, zone map changed. Petition number 18-REZ-05 until August 7.
Second.
Motion made in second茅on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Stick around. Agenda item 7C, Public Hearing, 18 SCU-05, 200 and 202 North Main Street. Again, Matt, please.
All right, thank you. All right, so with this project, we see a new project in a very old house. The petitioners would like to place a restaurant at the Brown Holloway House, which is located on the corner of Main Street and ARP. It is the White, White House that is just right there on Main Street. The petitioners have worked with Capital Area Preservation throughout the process to make sure that the addition, that they're going to be putting on the back of the Brown Holloway House matches with the styling of the historic home, such that it does not endanger their possibilities of designating as a local historic landmark. It is a new project, so it does need to come before you for special exception use, because it is within the Village District. Oops, there we go. So here we see on the Village District Plan where the previous Things of Joy was located. That is the same property. So the site plan shows all of the parking being located in the side and rear of the existing structure. They have shown the building addition in yellow, the existing building up front. So you can see how close it really is to that intersection. And when you add sidewalks, it's really going to be close. They have requested several, several might be an understatement, but several waivers and variances to accomplish what they wish to accomplish with this project. One of those is to provide a gravel parking area rather than a hard surface parking area as required by our ordinance, UDO. Another would be to locate an outdoor patio and seating area in a side yard rather than between the building and the front lot line, also as specified in our UDO. And another variance, shown here, relates to the dumpster. Our requirement is for dumpster enclosures to be hard-walled masonry on three sides. They have selected to match the lap siding of the existing structure, and have it be white lap siding around three sides. With the landscape plan, we see that they have selected to preserve the two large oaks along Main Street, as well as the large evergreen that is on ARP. They would be utilizing a boardwalk standard that town has. It's utilized over here on the west side of North Main as well, in order to really get over top of the roots without killing the tree, but still providing accessibility around the site. In addition, they've been able to utilize a large elm tree in the back corner of the property. Unfortunately, there are two large pecan trees that would be removed as part of this plan to facilitate the improved entryway and ADA parking stalls. So those would be somewhere around here, and back here, I believe. So these are the building elevations. This is showing the unchanged North Main-facing elevation. This would be the ARP. Yes, the, well...
I think you're right.
Yeah, that would be the east side. So that would be by the parking area where you're coming in off of ARP. The north-facing. And then this would be the ARP-facing side. So what they've done, this is the kitchen that is going to be the addition. So rather than having windows looking into the back of shelves inside of a commercial kitchen, they've brought before us these kind of fake shutters, closed shutters with the shutter latches. We see a detail of. And this was all run by Capital Area Preservation, and they agreed that this was a good solution. So like any retrofit of an old residential house into a commercial structure, they have submitted lots of waivers of architectural standards. So what we see here is the use of lap siding rather than brick or stone to reduce the minimum base standard. So there would be a stone base typically that you would find on commercial structures. A reduction in the amount of glass on the addition. And that's probably worth noting that all of these waivers are only tied to the building addition, not the existing structure. Additionally, a waiver's been supplied to use white picket fencing instead of the black decorative fencing that we want elsewhere in our Village District. Additionally, there was a waiver submitted to waive the requirement for relocation of overhead existing utilities underground. I believe we're going to dig a little bit deeper into that in a minute, once we get the Planning Board summary. So in addition to the waivers, there, like I stated before, are a number of variances. The first is simply to allow for any kind of expansion of this structure. As it sits essentially on top of the property line, any expansion would need a variance to allow for the expansion of a non-conforming building or structure. The second, as I stated, was for the seating in the side yard. The third is for the gravel parking. The fourth is because the building addition does not extend all the way up to 25 feet and two stories, but rather only to 9 and 1/2 feet. And the last one was the trash enclosure. If you have any specific questions relating to the engineering standards, we can have Rachel come up. Otherwise, I will move on.
What's your thoughts?
I'm good.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we might have Sean come up and give a brief synopsis.
Please. Hi, Sean.
Sean McGrath.
Planning Board didn't have a whole lot of concern with this project, other than the discussion of the overhead utilities. So trying to find a way if the applicant can combine with a potential bank, or someone else there to actually do all of that in line, to have all of that area be underground instead of above ground. And then to preserve the trees that they designated in the, in the development plan to do so. That was all we had for the Planning Board, otherwise it was unanimous.
Okay. Any further questions, Sean? Pretty clear. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And so since the Planning Board meeting, we were trying to consider ways for that combination to occur of maybe working with the bank site. So I'm actually going to call up Rachel from Engineering to kind of go over what they've come up with.
Okay. Hi, Rachel. I have to do the same thing.
Even have like little heels on tonight. It's not working for me.
Little stepstool.
That's right. So we had some internal discussion after the conversation we had with Planning Board about the petitioners' waiver for waiving the requirement to take overhead utilities underground. They did submit a letter from Duke, where Duke explained that because of the short distance across the property frontage, that it doesn't meet their minimum requirement to proceed with taking the lines underground. As far as partnering with adjacent projects, what we would suggest that council members consider is a fee in lieu of the requirement. And that fee would then be used at a later date and with adjacent projects, in an effort to bring those projects with shorter distances that don't quite meet Duke's requirements, but in combination with other projects would actually meet or exceed that minimum distance, so that we can achieve what we are looking for on Main Street, and to get those overhead lines under. Do you have any questions? As far as that goes?
We're good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, I think the applicants are here. You want to make mention of that? Please.
Roll over to their presentation. If you have any more questions for me before they come up, cover it.
We're down this road, yeah.
All right. So I'll bring up the applicant now.
Matt and Christie. Come on down. Would you like to do some opening comments first, and then we'll open it up for questions and answers? Is that good for you, or do you want to just? Yeah, okay. Let's do that.
That'd be wonderful. Matt Griffith, Christie Griffith, residing at 103 Moss Mountain Lane in Apex, here on behalf of 200 and 202 North Main Street Project, as you can see. Should I click the spacebar to advance?
You can either roll the thing forward, or you can...
Okay. We know some people, we don't know everybody. But as we just said, we're Matt and Christie. Along with Natalie, Daniel, and Eve, who are not present tonight, we make up the Griffith family. And like probably all, at least most of the people here, we moved to town. For us, that happened in 2006. And as I said, our residence is in Apex, but we call Holly Springs our home. You can, you can see us around town. We're at the Hunt Center, Wamble Park, Holly Grove Elementary, Holly Springs School of Dance, a lot at Holly Springs School of Dance. I've been proud to be a Cub Scout leader at the PAC over at Sunrise United Methodist Church. And Christie's been back in the kitchen at Mama Birds since before it opened, really. Soon, we hope to be spending a lot of time at 200 North Main. But of course, tonight, we're really happy to be spending time here. We've been working on a restaurant concept as a dream for a really long time, but in earnest for the past two years roughly, and the last nine months, really focused on how we use this place, the Brown Holloway House, and its surrounding half acre, to start building that dream. But we also realize that we're very fortunate to have this opportunity, and are not just building it for us, but to help fulfill a very important part of the vision for Holly Springs Village District. Right? We want to create a downtown that's not just a downtown, but has a unique character, sense of community, sense of place, and an identity that differentiates it from other downtowns in the area. We believe that opening up the Brown Holloway House, inviting the community in to eat, drink, and socialize is a great way to do that. And we believe, or we know that we will work tirelessly so that our restaurant will be a proud northern gateway for the citizens and their, their historic village.
Of course, we believe that food is one very delicious way to bring people together. We want to celebrate Holly Springs' growth within the context of our history by opening up one of the oldest homes in town and inviting our neighbors inside. The juxtaposition of our past and our future is a key principle of our concept, and it will be evident in our menu, our decor, and our service. When it comes to this particular building, you might imagine that this is a difficult task. I'm used to starting from scratch in the kitchen, but to build our restaurant, we are starting with a home that is practically a finished project. So our key words here are convert and preserve. Matt and I are committed to preserving the Brown Holloway House. We'll need to expand it with an addition, just as Holly Springs is expanding. We've tailored our design to ensure that an historic landmark status will still be possible, thanks to the guidance from the folks at Capital Area Preservation.
So as you've seen, and as Matt described, we've been spending a lot of time on paperwork, mostly in the form of all these waivers and variances that we've requested. But we hope you also realize that we're doing this in order to create something special for Holly Springs, create a place that, that the community can enjoy. Friends, family, colleagues, hopefully everyone in this room will spend time there, starting, starting in the Brown Holloway House's 179th year, and continuing on into the 3rd century, for sure. We're happy to answer any questions or discuss anything that's on your mind. But I'd like to reiterate that we are obviously very excited to be here tonight. And we, we hope to have your careful consideration and approval of our development petition.
Just echo one thing that Christie said. The food was wonderful. Been there a couple times for various events that are pre-opening, if you will. Done good.
Thank you.
Questions of the applicants, from the board?
I have a question either for the applicant or Matt. Thrilled that you're saving the tree on Earp Street, and you're going to put a wood sidewalk. Is that what that is? So who's responsible for taking care of that wood sidewalk after it's... Because it's not permanent like concrete. So who's, who, you know, if boards go, who has to do that?
Inside the right-of-way, similar to what is on Main Street there, where when Eckards first came to town, when they had to build that sidewalk, that becomes town maintenance.
Okay.
And as well as the sidewalk that is along Holly Springs Road, right there at Blaylock.
Okay.
That one's also, so is, you know, in the right-of-way, that is under public works' purview.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I think that's thunder, don't worry about it. It's got it under control. Could you handle this, please? Air code, damn, that's your job.
And the electronic line that you saw in front of the house? The proposal is a fee in lieu, and at some point, it would get buried, is the goal, right? Okay.
Yes. Other questions? Or comments? I think it's a great project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just for the record, we'll open and close the public hearings, because there was none. Is there further discussion from the board? And/or further questions or comments?
I had a couple for Matt.
Go.
On the development plan, I think I saw an indication for the focal point in the TV district. Right, we require a focal point, I think, at one of the intersections. And there was an indication of a plaque there. I think that was more in the notes, but it wasn't necessarily on the plan. Is that something we have to capture on the plan to make sure it's, it's done? Or is there any, what was the discussion you had with the applicant on that?
Right, so we discussed a couple of options with them. I think the common ground we landed on was to create some kind of plaque recognizing the historic nature of the property and putting it up that corner. It is, the requirement itself is located within our comprehensive plan, so it is more of a, this is something we really want to see. It's not located within the Unified Development Ordinance. That would be something that would be required, or would have to be granted a variance to avoid. So it's, it's something that we want to see implemented where possible. So all along, it's been a discussion of, you know, if they want to include some kind of local art, or they discussed doing a mural on the chimney. Not sure how happy Capital Area Preservation would be about that, but...
Good question.
But also, I mean, the house itself is kind of a focal point at that, at that corner. So I think that argument could also be made. We're, I mean, we're excited to see what they, what they come... We're, I mean, we're excited to see what they, what they come up with in terms of, you know, what's being, what will actually go out there. But we haven't yet worked out a design for the placard or anything.
And we're going to stay where we are.
The fire, the police change here, so move your head.
That's right.
My stuff is coming.
Yeah, it's good. I'll keep going. Mics are out, so talk loud. Billy's here, so he's going to try to figure it out.
Mark, you good?
I've got it.
Okay. We have to start reading out, but the last couple minutes.
Keep going. Matt, the sidewalk requirements, I think down there is the eight-foot decorative, but what I couldn't discern from the plans, with a lot of the sections are going to the five-foot boardwalk, I think on Earp and on Main. Was there any section at all that was going to be the eight-foot decorative piece that we see downtown anywhere? Or was it all?
Yeah, so this is north of the area where that would be required. I think that ends at Earp, yeah.
Mics are back on. Yay. Thank you, Billy. Ann?
Last one, the gravel, the waiver for the gravel driveway, the variance for the gravel parking lot. Do we have any other examples in town of that, or have we seen that before?
What is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the PowerPoint that seems like it's down there, there were several, there were several examples, like the Masonic Lodge.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And Masonic Lodge, yeah.
There's a couple different areas in town, and because of the historic nature and where it is, we felt like that would be combined with the, the building of the town and not require all that hard stuff.
Okay.
I was, I was just reminded that the MEMS House was granted a variance for gravel parking in 2015.
That's right. Forgot that myself, yeah. Exactly. Good question. I think we have at the Masonic Lodges, we have a historic marker, do we not? Do you remember that?
We did.
Is that kind of what you're talking about, Dan? Something like that for the house? Like, on the right track or different?
No, there was a, like Matt said, in the comprehensive plan, there's an indication for like a focal point or...
Right.
Some feature on the property, like across the street, the bank was doing that piece of art there on their corner. And then on this plan, they had an indication for a plaque, so it sounds like it's, it's being talked about and they're committed to look at that.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Matt?
I have a question, Matt. As we are going to be talking soon about 7D and 7E, does 7C comply with what we might be passing in 7D and E?
If you were to grant them permission to cut down the pecan trees, then yes. As it is a project within the Village District boundaries, they would have had to preserve all trees over 20 inches or get your permission to remove them. Is that what you were asking?
Yes. So if the order was different, did they not, did they ask permission to cut the pecan trees and we granted it, or because we're, we're passing this before we pass the tree ordinance? I'm trying to get the order.
Right. I mean, the tree, the trees are still up, but it wasn't, yeah, the order was not considered as I'm aware, but...
This was a request, right? For, I think you mentioned the purposes of the entryway? Am I correct?
Because, yeah, because the, the application was submitted months ago, it would have not had been affected by anything we passed tonight. So while, while we're working with people, when they submit their development plans, on bringing them up to speed on what we are bringing forward, at that point, it is not yet adopted. So they, they've basically set their clock at when they submitted based on what we had in our ordinance at that time.
At that time, okay.
And there's a state law that protects, you get a permit, you get a choice of whether or not you have to abide by a newly enacted law after you've made an application. So it wouldn't...
Be a conflict?
It's keyed on the application when they apply it.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
If it's any consolation, they've stated that they would like to actually mill the pecan trees and use the wood in fixtures in the house, but...
That's a good thing, yeah. Okay. That's good.
Do we know, is the patio going to be always open, or is it going to be built to be enclosed during winter months or anything like that?
I think the applicant might be able to answer that question.
You can stay there if you want.
You can just say, yeah.
I'll, I'll repeat what you said.
Okay, okay.
Dispropose, opens, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sherri. Other questions or comments? I think we're all familiar with this project. We've been down the road a few times.
So I will, I will mention one more thing.
Oh, sure, please.
So being in the, in the Village District carries other benefits for small developer projects and new businesses. And that includes the DDI, so they can get some funding from the town for infrastructure-related improvements. And that would include burying power lines.
That's handled at staff level, correct? As your level?
Yeah. That, that would be, that would be having to come back through...
There's a committee, a DDI committee that staff, that will put, will put together a document for you to approve that spells out what incentives are given to the downtown.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Harvey?
That's the reverse. You know, the DDI is actually the reverse, so you make a payment in some sort of way that applies that project, and then you guys decide, you know, we...
At that time. Got it. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Let's zip right along.
We should, the one, one thing I had was on waiver 10, I think, was the overhead power lines. So there was discussion about the fee in lieu. I don't know if that's what Matt was alluding to with the DDI contributing to any portion of that, but I think all the waivers are packaged together, so if we're considering the fee in lieu, we may want to pull that from the package. Or discuss it at least and see what the consensus is.
Sure. Or maybe pull it. Comments on that?
You can act on it separately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
I agree. That would go under one of the motions, you think?
You would have to pull 18 WAV 10 out of the package and vote on it separately. Or we could, we could, we could amend it to just include, to just include fee in lieu.
Suggestions?
Yeah, that's probably best.
Amended?
That.
All right.
Fee in lieu.
Okay. So who wants to tackle motion number one of two?
Motion to adopt Resolution 18-24, making the necessary findings a fact for special exception use 18-SEU-23 in each of the variances and waivers requested in association with Development Plan 18-DP-02.
Second.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. There it is.
So that one would be the resolution to amend, which I'll discuss when I have the family through it.
Right.
Yeah, I think that was the...
You want to tackle that?
Just a minute.
Whoever.
So how are we wording that?
Suggestions on wording?
Amendment. That's what you, what is the fee in lieu? Does that have to be listed right now or?
No.
Yeah.
Right. So if we just say a fee in lieu is later as a, that will be determined, but we don't need that dollar amount right now.
Okay. Can that be added to motion number two then, right? Who wants to tackle number two?
I'll, I'll try.
Go ahead.
I can help.
I hear you.
Motion to adopt Resolution 18-25, approving special exception use 18 SEU-05 in each of the variances and waivers, with the exception of 18 WAV 10, which we will add the fee in lieu per staff's discussion, requested in association with Development Plan 18-DP-02.
Second.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And guess who's still up? Agenda I of 7D, public hearing, 18 UDO 02 7.01, Landscape Regulations Amendment to Add Tree Preservations. Matt?
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, we're talking about tree preservation. This process started a while ago. It's picked up speed recently. Happy to be bringing it to you this evening. It all started with a request for a champion tree ordinance, similar to those that you see really around, around, around the county and really the country. What we learned very quickly was that while a champion tree ordinance can save a few large trees, it's possible to go way beyond that in community benefits, rather than just focusing on one tree here and there. So we spent a lot of time researching, talking to our neighbors, figuring out what they have adopted as their tree ordinances, talking to planners in Apex, Cary, Garner, Wake Forest, really digging in deep with them and figuring out what was working, what wasn't. Got some pretty visceral reactions from a couple planners about their ordinances and what they would change if they were going to start over. So we were able to get that kind of out of the way upfront and start off on the right foot. A large piece of that came from the Green Growth Toolbox folks and, and their, their model ordinances. Recently, Pittsboro adopted a new tree ordinance that heavily leaned on the Green Growth Toolbox model ordinance. And so we, we took some things from them, we took some things from Cary and Garner and Clayton and Raleigh, and tried to pull something together that other people have already put these things into implementation. And so we're not reinventing the wheel, we're just providing alternate, alternate ways to get to our goal. So through the process, we met with our technical review committee twice. We had a town council workshop, and then we went to planning board last month, and here we are today. At our town council workshop, we asked all of you to complete a preference survey based on some of the tree preservation methods used in other Wake County municipalities. This told us which were the highest priorities and which were the lowest. Kind of crunching those numbers, we came out with specimen and champion trees being the highest priority, followed by canopy retention measures, as well as hardwood forest perimeter So this is the ranking of highest preference to lowest among those categories that we looked at. So taking kind of the top four, because those were really statistically the most significant there. After that fourth one, it kind of drops off. So taking the top four, we developed a series of specific methods for tree preservation based on what others have already done elsewhere. At the TRC, prior to the planning board meeting, we had discussed the ranking of the preservation methods and whether or not, you know, one was a higher priority than another, and if so, how do we implement that? Do we say that you have to prove that you can't meet number one before you move to number two? Or is it kind of a self-selecting thing? We had decided that while the prioritization may not, may not be a valuable requirement, it has administrative value in that we as staff can help direct people using a priority list better than we can, saying, well, you can take your project through and we'll find out at town council. So this allows us to more carefully and appropriately guide our petitioners during the review process. Likewise, we had discussed what we're calling restoration areas, and I'll get a little bit more into the specifics of that in a minute. But as well, the, the TRC requested that we seek feedback from the development community, send out a draft to the folks that are going to have to work through the ordinance and make sure that this is something that can be done and is not, you know, overburdening anybody, but is also meeting our intents. So these are folks that read through these ordinances daily. So we sent it out to four different firms that have completed work in Holly Springs as well as elsewhere in Wake County. Some of the goals that we came up with were to protect the unique natural character of Holly Springs, preserve the integrity of our forest canopy, promote the preservation of natural open space, protect native plant and animal species, and to reduce the environmental and visual impacts of development. So kind of the core of this ordinance is in the establishment of tree protection areas as a percentage of your project area. We've set these baselines at 20% of project area for single-family developments, 10% for commercial and multifamily. And industrial has been left out so that we can preserve our competitive advantage for large economic development projects. A lot of those projects end up preserving large areas anyway. Look at Securus, there are huge amounts of property out there that are untouched. And this will exist as an addition to current regulation. It's not replacing anything. You're not going to be allowed to double count anything. This is in addition to. And those percentages are all based on what others have done in Wake County. So we're not, it's not just being pulled out of a hat. These are kind of in the middle of what we're seeing around Wake County. The numbers vary greatly because some towns allow you to count, you know, floodways or already otherwise required landscape buffers towards that. We're not going to do all of those things. We will allow you to count some of your otherwise protected floodway and wetlands and things like that, but I'll get into that right now, actually. So the, really four of our five methods are up here. The, the first being supplemental undisturbed perimeter landscape yards. It's mouthful, but it has meaning, I swear. What this means is that we are taking areas that are already being used for perimeter landscape yards or, you know, riparian buffers, things like that, and we're expanding them. You're, you're taking an area that is wooded with some hardwood mix that meets our minimum hardwood composition requirements, and you're adding that on to an otherwise required buffer. We're going to allow you, we're going to credit you for that area that you're adding on to it, but not the area that was already required. That is something that has changed since the planning board. I had stated at the planning board that we would allow for the counting of the already required planting buffer if it was utilizing existing vegetation, but we already have that provision in our ordinance to where if you have existing vegetation, you can use it and get a discount, if you will, on the amount of plants that are required in that buffer. So we've already crossed that bridge. The carrot on the stick is already there, hoping that developers will save as many trees as possible at those, in those perimeter yards. Minimum of 25% of the trees within those landscape yards would have to be hardwoods. And again, there's no double counting. And again, there's no double counting. So the next category would be significant tree stands. This again would have a twenty-five percent minimum hardwood mix. Here we're looking for more mature hardwood canopy. These are going to be areas with a contiguous canopy, so it's kind of crossing over, the drip lines are crossing over, and where the overall area of the combined drip lines is going to be over ten thousand square feet. Significant natural resource areas, these are areas like wetlands, stream buffers, floodways that are already protected, either by the state or, you know, our other ordinances. And these are areas that may not, they may not actually have a whole lot of tree coverage, but there's value in protecting them. For these areas, you can count them, but you cannot get more than half of your tree preservation area from them. So yes, we want you to protect these areas, but we also want you to find it elsewhere on your site. And ponds are included in this, whether or not they are protected as wetlands or not, just as farm ponds or things like that, that we want to preserve those as kind of natural amenities within our developments. So this would be kind of an example of where you might be able to use that. So if you had a wetland and a stream with a buffer on it, you could count that area, as well as your farm pond, as a significant natural resource area and get up to half of your tree preservation area credit from that. Specimen tree preservation, this is closest to the champion tree ordinances that you see elsewhere, where we would qualify our pine species over, it says twenty-four, but it is thirty, over thirty inches. And I can, I used all these dead trees to print these, I have to use them.
Good line.
So your, that's your thirty inch?
It's a big tree.
That's going to be your pine. Looks like a half the size of the crest. That's a big tree.
That's a big tree.
Meanwhile, your non-pine is going to be twenty-four inches, so slightly smaller.
Still a pretty big tree.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Pardon?
Also a big tree. And then, we're also wanting to save other unique or rare tree species. Somewhat open-ended on that, but dogwoods, red buds, and longleaf pines, we'd like to see saved around town. These are all important trees to the state of North Carolina, and we see value in that. So the way that this gets credited, since it is an area-based requirement, is you would be credited three times the area of the estimated drip line. So here's a graphic of that. So your trunk's going to be in the middle there. If you had a fifteen-foot radius on that drip line, your area under that is seven hundred square feet. So you multiply that by three, you're going to get credit for twenty-one hundred square So here you would see what, you know, might be called out as a tree preservation plan for development, where you have, these are specimen trees, and then where you have a bunch of them clumped together, it may qualify as a significant tree stand. We expect that more than one option will likely be used on any given plan. It is not a pick this one or this one, it is however you can get to it, show us. Let me put these where real quick. So, we also wanted to recognize that not all sites have large trees, or any trees, really. So, we wanted to provide the opportunity for some kind of reforestation or restoration of the land on those sites. So these are areas where we would like to see the petitioner get creative. We want to have some kind of native reforestation on twenty percent or ten percent of your site, if it's clear that you can't meet it otherwise. If it's clear that none of those first four categories can get you to your ten or twenty percent, we want to work with you to put in a new native plant community on your site, or work on establishing, you know, maybe a native wetland in stormwater control measures, something like that. These are opportunities more than impediments, I would hope. So we feel like we've created something here that kind of represents a lot of the different tools that are used around our community, and in other places in Wake County. But we also feel like it's flexible and allows people to meet our goals while not sacrificing maybe the economic viability of their property. We're not trying to take property away from people, we're trying to save trees, and we want to allow folks to have as many pathways to compliance as possible with this. So it's not copying one or two communities, it's taking little bits and pieces from maybe five or six, and working them into a, hopefully cohesive ordinance. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one question. The planning board recommended seven zero two. I didn't understand, the fine scheme scalable based upon the size of the project, would you cover that again for me?
Yes, absolutely. So, the concern was that the fine structure of, so if you have a development plan that's approved, and you've specified that this is a tree preservation area, and I'm not going to take out anything in here, and then you go and you take out a tree in that area, the way we have it written now, as opposed to at the planning board meeting, is that you will be restricted from getting any permits for the three years, as we have in our timbering ordinance. Or you pay a fee in lieu of that waiting period of two thousand dollars per occurrence. So if you take down five trees, it's two thousand dollars for each one of those trees, plus if it is a site under five acres, it's a hundred dollars per caliper inch for each one of those trees that has been removed and not replaced on the site. If you're over five acres, it's two hundred fifty dollars per caliper inch. So the idea was that the large site developers are going to be less motivated to save trees if it's only a hundred dollars per caliper inch versus two hundred fifty dollars. And I believe Sean McGrath was the one that had that concern, so if you'd like him to respond to that.
Sure. Appreciate Sean.
Senator Britt? No trees harmed in our discussion of the planning board, I'm like that. What we did discuss, we discussed all of the different variations that you've heard Matt talk about. But the two key things we covered, one was a protection of key trees. So if you do have a champion tree, how are they going to make sure and ensure that the root structure of that was not harmed? So you don't preserve a tree, but then it dies a year or two later, anyway. So that was described by the staff in detail for us as well. But the key thing we came down to was, okay, so I've got somebody with a two-acre lot, and I've got somebody with a two-hundred-plus acre project. There's no huge deterrent for them to go, "Well, there's a champion tree, that's okay. It's in the way of where we want to put our clubhouse, so there's no big deterrent." Whereas if somebody wants to put their primary house there on a two-acre lot, there's a huge deterrent for that because of the size and the scale. So that was a concern, that there should be someone of scale for a huge developer with a large project, to have a larger fine to do so than someone with a two-acre lot.
Questions?
So Sean, you're happy with what hap, the end result?
With the two hundred and fifty? I think it's a little bit of a deterrent, but I'm not sure that it's still a great deterrent for somebody who's doing a multimillion-dollar project. I don't really feel that's probably a large deterrent, quite honestly. I still think they're going to mow it down, to be blunt.
Thanks, Sean.
So, there was another portion that we had discussed earlier, within the village district. So projects under two acres, this does not apply. However, all projects within the village district are required to preserve all trees over twenty inches, or twenty inches or greater, unless they have the approval of town council or their designating board. If we decide to form a tree board, that would be an activity for them, I'm sure, for the time being, since that hasn't been formed yet, it would fall on all of you.
So to clarify that, two-acre minimum is only within village district, is no minimum outside of that?
The two-acre minimum is across our planning jurisdiction. So, within the village district, it doesn't matter what size your project is, you have to save those twenty-inch or greater trees. It's just everywhere else, this is where that applies, is two acres or greater.
Could there be an issue if a large, larger-than-two-acre lot is purchased and then subdivided into two acres and less, and avoid any tree ordinance issues?
I think that the act of subdividing would qualify as a project, and you would be subject to the ordinance, in order to complete that subdivision.
So if it's only development projects, existing homeowners, doesn't apply. If I'm a homeowner and I want to cut down a tree in my backyard, I'm not a development project, I just want to take down a tree?
Correct.
Does not apply.
Does not apply. Regardless of if you're in the village district or not.
Other questions at this point?
Matt, can you speak from the workshop we had? We were two of only, only the two towns in Wake County that didn't have tree preservation, is that correct?
Correct.
So this will now bring us in line with pretty much every town except one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's, in terms of what we're putting together, it's equal to other towns, it's not, it's not more restrictive, or how does that?
No, if anything, it's just taking from what they've said they would not have done, that we're learning from their mistakes.
Okay.
And that's kind of the good thing about being last to cross the bridge.
There's truths to that.
Yeah.
What were the developers' comments?
It was largely relating to kind of the organization of it. There were some comments on the sizing requirements that we had proposed. I think there was some confusion over the fact that we had previously called our specimen trees champion trees, and that immediately leads somebody to believe that these cannot be cut down, period. Whereas the specimen tree hopefully conveys more the truth that we're bringing forward, that this is an option, we consider these trees to be, you know, notable, you can meet the ordinance elsewhere, though.
This was a lot of work done in a short amount of time. It's very impressive.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, let's open a public hearing. We have three signed up. I would ask you to try to keep it within three or four minutes, if you would. Number one in line is Preston Dunn. Yeah. Name and address again, please, pass.
Preston Dunn, one two zero one one, Highway ninety-six South, Dunn, North Carolina. I'm a custom home builder, and I was hoping to come here to build. The way this tree ordinance is written, it's going to only be, make it where the people that have the resources, I don't have a certified botanist on my staff, it's just me. And to be able to meet all this, I just can't do it. And I was hoping to come build this community, to come up into here, and be a custom home builder, small guy. And I understand what it's, you don't like the clear cut. And there's, I think there was a cutoff time, there's a couple of other builders that were in here that are concerned the same. They were probably out, they're small builders, custom home builders. They were probably out working on their sites and couldn't get in here, get here on time, and were public, cut off. But anyway, that's pretty much it. This ordinance, as it's written now, now, I'm not against a tree ordinance, but as it's written now, I just can't compete. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have Paul Kane, Paul here. Yeah. Again, name and address. Name and address, and you might mention what you do.
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul.
My name is Paul Kane. My home address is one oh five Denham Walk Court in Cary, the southernmost part of Cary, two houses south, and I'm in Holly Springs. Some people call it Capex Springs. I'm also here in my capacity as the executive vice president and CEO of the Home Builders' Association of Raleigh and Wake County. And I want to start out by saying that I'm not here to talk against the tree ordinance, but I am here to ask that a little bit more input be given from the development community. I do want to commend Matt and the town planners on all the diligence they've done in putting together a draft document. I do note that in the stated purpose of this amendment is to obviously preserve trees and to provide options to developers so as to not reduce economic viability of a site. I think the tree preservation part of this is very good, and there's a lot of preservation. I think the economic viability side needs a little bit more work. I know that this has been on your books for a long time. Frankly, I just became aware of this about two or three weeks ago. I know that the town reached out to, I think, four key engineering firms and landscape planners, and that's good input. But the guys who pay those bills are the developers, and the economics of it are crucial. A recent survey from the National Association of Home Builders showed that nationwide, on average, the sale price of an average new home, twenty-five percent of that sale price is a result of regulatory costs. And that more than half of that is pre-construction regulatory costs. So anytime we're talking about adding any element of cost, especially at the pre-construction phase, I think we need to do so judiciously and cautiously, and with a good amount of input. Some of the concerns, and granted, we've tried to pull together a group of some of our members, our membership is composed of nearly three thousand individuals in Wake County, who compose the residential construction industry, both at the development phase, as well as the new home construction, and even remodeling phase. And with the two or three weeks that we'd had to find out about this, that we tried to pull together a group and look at some of the issues. Some of the issues in terms of cost concerns involve the additional costs associated with tree surveys, the additional costs associated with hiring certified arborists, let alone the carrying costs that developers will incur by the delay in getting projects done as a result of this. Again, I'm not speaking against the idea of tree preservation, just making sure that the economic side of this has been fully vetted. You know, the economic impacts not only go to the developers themselves, but ultimately the citizens of Holly Springs, who will be buying these new homes. Obviously, the developer incurs additional costs, that gets passed on to the home builder when they purchase that lot, that gets passed on to the new home buyer as they make their home in Holly Springs. Affordability of homes is a nationwide issue right now and we want to make sure that that's not going to be a deterrent in that regard. Interestingly, another, we kind of looked at a number of things and the idea of having to plant new vegetation on property that doesn't have any trees at all ironically provides kind of a reverse incentive for a developer to go in and buy a treed lot and take out what they need versus to go in buying an empty lot and plant trees because it's cheaper to take trees out than it is to plant new trees. So, we've got to make sure that we're aware of the unintended consequences of some of these actions. We don't want to create a reverse incentive that actually encourages developers to go in and take out more trees than they need to versus having to the expense of planting trees. Really, tree preservation is the key. Holly Springs, like most communities, should desire a balance of housing styles, prices and options. And the more expense that gets piled on to the development phase favors the national, the large national tract builders. As Preston Dunn just said, as a small builder, that puts him at a disadvantage and I'm not sure that that's, that Mr. Dunn's the kind of, the builder that you want to drive out of your community. The project, what is a project? I couldn't find where it was defined. I know that they said that a homeowner that has a tree on their lot, they're not going to be permitted to take a tree out, but what if that homeowner wants to add a screen porch onto their home and they need to go through the permit process and get approval for that? Does that mean that if they live in a two and a half acre lot, they now have to comply with this? I mean, these are questions that we need to get the answer to. The two acre minimum, we believe, is too low for the very reason, one of the reasons I just mentioned. You're not going to see the large scale kind of development that I believe this ordinance is intended to address on two acres. I think probably you also have to distinguish between single family detached and single family attached, like townhomes. There maybe should be one standard for the single family detached and another for single family detached, maybe eight or 10 acres. Again, these are issues that we'd like to explore. Also question, why if the development is in a buffer area for repairing and wetlands, like the Noose River Buffer, for example, why only 50% of that counts? Why require them to do even more if a significant amount of the land purchased is already protected? It seems like that's going above and beyond and what's necessary in order to protect. Again, that just becomes an expense and a burden on the developer than the builder than the citizens. There need to be some considerations given for intentional versus unintentional removal of trees. It's not unheard of for, you know, accidents happen. And perhaps there could be considerations given for, if an accident happens, then other trees could be replanted as an alternative rather than the $2,000 penalty, which is pretty stiff. There is no intentionality addressed in this as well. Also, want to make sure that projects which are at least in the pre-approval phase, if not later, are grandfathered into this. I don't see that that's specifically addressed in here. I know there was some mention of that industrial properties are not considered part of this so that the town can remain economically strategic, but it also seems like industrial is some of the areas that are not the most attractive compared to like residential and that seems to be inequitable. At this point, I'm not here to speak against this, I'm not here to say we shouldn't do this, but I would ask that the town's outreach to the development community be more meaningful than for engineering and landscape firms. That some amount of time be taken for there to be more of a transparent effort and to outreach all affected stakeholders so that the economic side of this can truly be vetted out in ways that are meaningful. You're going to do this, we want to do it right, we want to be a part of that decision, we want to be at the table and help make sure that the economic numbers make sense. So, all I'm asking for is that a little bit more time be given, a little bit more evaluation be taken on the economic side of it and so then it can be a product everybody's happy with.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Holt. There he is. Hi Wayne. Name and address again, please.
Good evening, council. My name's Wayne Holt, 205 South Dixon Avenue Cary, also 6116 Castle Road. Most of you folks have probably know the high school is built on Castle, Castle was my grandfather. He purchased that property in 1927, built a home there, raised 17 children. We still own that property, it is still an operating farm today. The tree ordinance, as you have proposed it, and I'll touch a little bit on 7F as well, the tree ordinance as you have proposed it currently, our 72 acres that we currently have, we would lose probably 35 to 40% of that where we could not develop it. Because we do have some of the Noose River Buffer on that property, we'd have, can only use 50% of that. We also would have to put the other 20%. We'd have to take what's already currently in the ordinance as described, so we can't count that, we can't count the 50% of the buffer there or the Noose River Buffer. So we would lose quite a bit of that. We're not looking to develop that property. We were offered a lot of money several years ago. We did not feel that we were wanting to develop that. I am a small custom builder, I build 14 to 17 houses a year. I started in Cobble Ridge and Holly Springs in 2004. I built 25% of the homes in that subdivision, I built more custom homes in 12 Oaks than any other builder. I agree with Paul Kane. I'm also a past president of the Raleigh-Wake Home Builders Association, 2013. I spoke to you guys in 2013 several times. I agree with Paul. We are not opposed to a tree preservation ordinance. I built in the town of Cary, I was part of the decisions that were made, that champion tree ordinance there. We believe in what you guys are doing. We don't necessarily believe in the route that you got there. We do believe that the Home Builders Association, the development community should have been included. The engineering firms, as Paul said, are paid by us, the developers, the builders. We all need to work together for this ordinance. I think it was, as Ms. Kelly said earlier, a lot of work done in a very short period of time and I think that work was probably rushed and didn't include the stakeholders as it should have been. Again, we've been here a long time. If any of you folks live in Oak Hall, my mother's side of the family owned all of that property where the food line in Oak Hall is currently built. They sold that property when my grandparent, my grandmother died in 1978, they sold in about 79 or 80. So, you know, I've been here, my mom has lived in that house since 1961. As a child, I remember all the two lane roads and all the other things that we've talked about tonight, transportation. Joe Holloman is a native here, there's probably a few other natives I see in here. I'm a native. Most of you folks moved here. We're glad you came, we still want you to come, we want some more of you here. As a small builder, I want you here. You're buying my houses, you put my kid through college. But if anyone has a right to be upset about all the things that are happening, it's those natives that are here. And we're not opposed to anything that's happening here. We just want it done the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thanks.
Okay. At this point in time, we're going to close the public hearing for further discussion from the board. Several options come in line.
Yeah. Hey Matt, can you come up for a second? Just a couple of questions in reference to our tree ordinance. Is that consistent with Apex, Wake Forest, Cary, Fuquay Varina? I just, just trying to match apples to apples.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, because, I mean, it is not replicating any one of them, it's taking pieces from a lot of them, but the thresholds we're using are not far outside of what other people are asking.
Okay. Other questions?
The restoration requirement, if it's a farm and there's no trees, it's 20% we're asking them in a residential project to put up that isn't there?
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, if they can't get, if they can't get any tree preservation from anything else on their site, yes, it's going to be whatever kind of restoration area they're proposing that is not going to be able to be used for anything else.
So on 50 acres, that's 10 acres.
Mm-hmm. So Matt, who did you reach out to specifically in terms of feedback? You said landscape?
Developer wise.
Developer wise?
Yes, so we spoke with McKimmon Creed, McAdams, Withers Ravanelle and CLH Landscape Architects.
Okay. Not developers themselves?
No, no, the engineering firms.
That was a question, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. More questions here?
Well, I mean, I mean...
I think we're going in the right direction here.
I am, I want to be a champion tree city, I want, I want tree preservation, but I'm wondering if we should be, take a little more time to speak to some of these developers, especially Mr. Holt, Mr. Kane, who came up to see what suggestions they have. Doesn't mean we'll change anything, not necessarily, but I'm wondering if that, if we should sit down with them.
I like the idea, my concern is that after tonight, there'll be a run on people putting in a bunch of things before we pass this because you just...
That was, that was my...
I don't want to run on this because I...
Yeah.
That's my fear.
I don't want to add more red tape to it, but I think there's, I think there's a need to fine tune it a little bit. In the last seven months, I've talked to a lot of developers, a lot of landowners, a lot of real estate people doing projects and, you know, I got a number of phone calls even before this meeting from folks that weren't here. I think the one, the one thing that sticks out to me is the restoration area. I have a hard time making people plant trees on farms where they're not there. I think what we're trying to do is preserve the characteristics of the existing community that we have, the trees, the ponds, the stream buffers, things like that, that is, that makes this place so beautiful to live in. That's the stuff we want to keep around, but if it's already a farm, I have a hard time requiring 20% to go and plant that.
Right, and it's not necessarily a requirement that it be reforested, it just has to be a native plant community. So if it is a field of wheat grass that was growing there before that blew in, that can be your 20%. It can be an open field that is just native. It's open-ended at this point. So at this point, it's, if you had a farm...
Open-ended makes for a loose ordinance, though, that's my, that's my concern. If it's open-ended, then there's room for interpretation, it's ambiguous and we can't sit one way or the other on what we're trying to enforce, so if it's ambiguous, it shouldn't be in the document, is my thought. There are some other parts of it that are very concrete, right? The tree pieces, the tree stands, champion trees are very concrete. I like all of those, it's the ones that we can't really define and nail down are the ones that I'm concerned about.
Right.
Is there a hybrid where we could pass the part that we're solid about and said the other half, the parts about restoration that we put more work into that and talk to more folks?
Not sure that's going to answer all the questions, but...
I don't think we can because it's one.
It's all one?
It's all one, yeah. So I'm thinking, maybe we table this?
Go ahead.
I don't know.
Is there a way, as Councilwoman Kelly said, is there a way to, all of a sudden, you like say we have everybody inundate us in the next two weeks to get in before we pass this? I mean, is there a way to keep that going?
So, no. No, but it does take a good amount of work, you know, to get a development plan together. Nobody's going to throw a development, I don't think Holt's going to throw a development plan together in two weeks. Yeah, I think, I think there's a couple of options. You could dissect the restoration area and we can come back and give you something in two weeks that's a little bit more digestible and on parallel track, open up the dialogue with the Home Builders Association and the builders representatives on, all right, you've passed the work, in two weeks, you've passed an amended diluted ordinance, but let's also talk about what we need to do to change it, tweak it. You know, just because you pass it in two weeks doesn't mean you can't amend it at there, you know, with any concrete suggestions they come up with. And then along that same parallel track, look at the tweaking, the restoration aspect of it.
Would that, John, would that require tabling it totally or can we break it apart? That's, I think, the question on the table.
So you could, you could pass an ordinance tonight, pass everything in the ordinance except for D, you know, I'm not giving you the good reference here. Five D section of the ordinance talks about the restoration area. You know, if you wanted to do it now, you could make that your motion and, you know, pass that and then direct staff to...
Continue on the process?
Talk to, talk to other stakeholders other than the professional design stakeholders that they've done.
Makes sense?
What do you think, Matt?
Go ahead.
I mean, I guess I'd like to take the opportunity to clarify some of the things that Mr. Kane did bring up in his testimony. So, the cost of tree surveys and certified arborists was something that was specifically asked of the engineers that we reached out to and designers that we reached out to. Initially, we were suggesting that it be included for a entire site survey, which we immediately found out was going to be very costly, both from a time and money standpoint because the lead time to hire those arborists to go out and perform a full site survey, it's just not easy. So we've amended that to allow for the same kind of sample area surveys that we allow for when somebody is trying to utilize existing vegetation in a buffer. So that's something that we kind of turned around and allowed for. The, worry about the term project, it's actually a defined term in our UDO whereby it would account for really any, any development project or subdivision. So, I can pull up the definition for you, but it's essentially anything on a single use site, which would be really any kind of, not, not a single family home, but a, like a development site with a single user, could be a commercial site, industrial site, whatever. The, in addition to that, it would be any kind of single family or two family subdivision as included in the definition, or multifamily subdivision. Basically, any time that somebody is filing a development petition with us, this would get triggered if it was over two acres or within the village district. The replacement of accidentally damaged or killed trees, I don't know how to write in accidental into an ordinance, but willing to try. The fine would only be assessed when the tree was not replaced. So there's the opportunity to, if you knock down a 10-inch tree, you plant, you know, four, three-inch trees around the site and you're good to go.
Accidental is, makes me a little bit worried because I'm sure there'll be a lot of accidental, so I'm, I'm not crazy about that.
I think there's plenty to look at here, that's, that's my concern. I'm just amused about how to handle that kind of a situation where you have a proposal in front of you that has more than one issues that perhaps needs to be clarified, updated, you know, pick a name. I think Paul brought it out, certainly not against anything, but possibly looking at the economic part of this. I think the concept is pure and very important. That's up to the board, whatever you guys want to do, gals.
You know, we're here because we never had a tree preservation ordinance and, you know, I feel personally that was probably taken advantage of. And we're trying to rectify that and there's been a lot of time in that process and staff has consulted with, you know, numerous counterparts in the community, neighboring towns who have such ordinances, who, I mean, we're obviously in the minority in not having one. There has been a lot of time, this has been pretty well-known, I think, and... And to have Mr. Kane, I appreciate his input, but to provide it to us right now seems to me a little disingenuous. We could have received that in any number of forms beforehand to give us consideration. So I'm inclined to go forward with it. I think staff has put together something very well researched, consulted with, takes advantage of what has been learned by surrounding communities, and I'm very pleased with it.
Other comments?
I would say I have spoken to a lot of residents and they, they have been waiting for something like this for a long time. So while, while I did say that you work quickly, but it's been a need that you've been looking at for a long time. And I think I was expressing from the workshop that we had in March and the concepts that we had, you had done a lot of homework to prepare for that and then move that forward. So it, you know, I commend you guys. I mean, I think you really did your homework.
And I will say that we just integrated supplement number 18 into our UDO books at each of our desks. So amendments do happen quite frequently. So it could be that after a few projects run through, we identify issues. And, I mean, it, it would be great if we could foresee all of those issues upfront. But, you know, I'm not going to stand up here and tell you it's perfect.
I mean, other, other towns have, all the other towns except for us and one other have survived and grown.
Right.
With their ordinances. So as you say, with amendments, we can make it happen.
And if there's special requests, like you had mentioned before, that's something that we could actually take a look at.
So that's, yes, that's something else that hasn't been discussed yet. Is the inclusion of a waiver into this ordinance. And it is, it's the same as any, any kind of architecture waiver. You're going to show us alternate compliance. It's, it's not going to change the 20% or its 10% requirement. But if you can, if you can show us that, you know, if you're short on the hardwood percentage requirement, you can show us how, okay, I will put this many hardwoods over here and that'll get me up to the requirement, even though it's not existing vegetation. So we're, we're wanting to build that in just because we don't know exactly how it's going to shake out for each development site that we see in the coming year.
I think we had talked about that at the TRC, using the waiver process as a means to deal with some of the special circumstances and needs that are out there. At this point, is staff ready for that kind of trial by as they come? We're going to get some of these, maybe we need to get to the waiver process. Are we ready to embark on that journey and, you know, work with the development community to, to make it, you know, a mutually beneficial thing for everybody and try and achieve our goals, but at the same time meet some of their, you know, objectives or challenges too?
Yeah, I mean, we've already, we've already discussed how it's going to be integrated into our development procedures manual. And it's going to be included hopefully in the next, next update to that. So we'll have it ready to go.
Anybody else?
Actually, a question. Anything about, I was kind of on board with the tree preservation. Is the ordinance designed to increase large-scale development or decrease? Because it seems like.
I'll let you finish, but you're really out of order, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay, finish your point. You started. No, I'm serious. Start, finish your point.
I was just wondering, what, is it designed to decrease large-scale development or increase? It just seems like that's the only kind of people who have access to it.
I want to answer. I'm not sure anyone understands.
I couldn't hear the question, sir.
I think it's large-scale or small-scale neutral. It would apply to, you know, unless you define large scales, anything over two acres. You're exempt under two acres. So, you know, it's, the, the cost of a certified arborist, you know, it's, it's rather neutral as to whether or not it's large-scale or small-scale.
I think one of the, one of the things we could consider is what's on two agenda items away in the future land use plan, right? Is do our densities that we have on there support this? Because there's ways to tweak that to make this a little bit more manageable, just something to think about. But that, much like this, is not perfect right now. It's not going to be perfect for a little bit. We're going to be tweaking that as we do plan updates and everything else. We're going to have to do the same thing here. It's important because we've heard consistently from our residents that this is a concern. So it's important we get something on the books. At the same time, I'd reiterate my concern for the restoration piece of the ordinance, so.
Let me, five D.
Yeah, for me.
Go through that process, too.
Is that something you want to take out?
I'd be okay moving forward, taking that piece out.
I am as well. I'd like to get something on the books. That'd be great.
Okay, you want to move it? I think the consensus is at this point, five D would be taken out at this point? Yes?
Yes.
That was the question.
Five D, the restoration areas?
Yeah.
I do want to make sure that it's clear as well because there are some comments made by several people that spoke that these tree preservation areas are not exclusive of developable lots. So a tree preser, a portion, all of the tree preservation area can be on individually platted lots. There'll be an easement that those areas cannot be disturbed. So this doesn't reduce the developable area of a project. So it's not subtracted from the acreage for their density calculation. And the area can be on the planted lots.
Anything else? Let's move it along, Johnny, please. Oops, already did that.
Yeah. Sorry, Sean.
Motion to accept the following statement as being true. The requested UDO text amendment is consistent with the vision Holly Springs Comprehensive Plan, specifically the sections as listed in agenda packets.
Second.
Second.
Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Much may be made in second on favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. This may be where the five D comes in. Who wants them to?
This is where we take out five D.
Yes.
A motion to adopt ordinance 18-09 to approve an act unified development ordinance amendment 18-UDO-02, with the removal of five D.
Second.
Much may be made in second on favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. And I'll make another request. Paul, are you still here? I think you are. Would you send me with, just to me, some of your comments that you made and some of the comments that Wayne made or something like that? I'd like to hear them and take a look at the whole thing as a possible amendment for the future. I don't know what else to say.
We didn't hear what the amendment was, so we don't know what was taken out.
Oh, I'm sorry, five D.
So the restoration areas were removed from the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide you whatever you request.
I appreciate it. We can talk later. Okay, thank you. Time seventy, public hearing, 18 CPA 03, section four, community character, historic preservation. Sean, Sean Ryan.
Counsel, I have a quick question. My house is listed on the historical homes as part of this. Should I, does this impact my value of my house? Should I step away or stay?
So what is the, what's the proposed vote?
The purpose of the amendment is to update our community character section, which includes an update from the recent Wake County survey of historic properties in which Councilwoman Kelly's property is identified on that list. The purpose of the amendment is to update section four, community character, which includes updating the list based on the 2016 Wake County Historic Resource Survey. And Councilwoman Kelly's house is identified on that Historic Resource Survey.
Was it originally or?
I do not believe it was originally on the survey. I believe it's a new addition.
I would suggest that you recuse.
I think it was on before, but just, it's section differently, I think, now. I think we were on the, one of the maps that had like 20, I think we made that list.
On the original, 32. I'm not sure if, if Councilwoman Kelly believes.
If we think this motion is going to change the status of your historic designation, then I would suggest that you should recuse yourself. However, if it's not changing the status of your house, now, I don't know what it was before and what it's going, going to be next, so.
It was scratched. I guess we could look real quickly. Are you looking, Sean? I believe we're on the list before.
You are correct. It was previously identified on the survey.
So if it's going from identified to identified again, I don't think any vote that you take is going to really change the status of your, your structure. So I would say that you don't recuse yourself. You, there's no.
Your recommendation is not to recuse, correct?
To recuse if, if it's been designated and the effect is that it'll stay designated by this vote, then there's no need to recuse yourself.
Rest of council is okay with that?
Sure.
I just want to be clear. Thank you.
All right.
Before we get into the actual amendment before you tonight,
I did want to take this opportunity just to update the council on what we have been working on in regards to historic preservation since the workshop back in April. In addition to other ordinances that our department has been working on, we've been actively working on historic preservation these past several months. Since March, we have made four individual site visits with capital area preservation to various properties around Holly Springs in which there is a potential development interest. The Stevens House, which had a better picture for you. This is located at NC 55 and Ralph Stevens Road. Unfortunately, the forest has grown up around it and the house is pretty much a total loss. We've visited the Pack House, a house on Sunset Lake Road, where Peterson Station Project is proposed, as well as the Dr. Brown House. We've also launched a new historic preservation webpage with information for residents on the historic properties in Holly Springs, as well as ways to get more additional information on the Wake County program or on state programs. And we are currently working on a UDO text amendment, which will be going to the planning board next week and to town council next month. So just something to look forward to next month regarding that. But the purpose of the amendment tonight is to modify section four of the Comprehensive Plan. That's our community character section, which speaks to the town's goals and policies for historic preservation. This section has largely not been updated since the last update, which was in 2009. So we're almost 10 years without an update. So there are some language that needs to change. There are some buildings that have moved in status, so we're correcting that. We are also replacing table 4.01, which is the local historic resource inventory and the associated map that goes with that. The previous map was based on a 2007 survey of Wake County. So the new map and the new list is based on the most updated data from 2016. And it was a substantial update that added a significant amount of structures to the town's historic resource lists. Just to kind of give you an idea, the previous list was only 32-long. There were not many structures that were considered potentially historic within the town of Holly Springs. The 2016 survey was updated to indicate that there are 102 identified properties within the town's planning area that are potentially a historic resource. And so we've gone ahead and we've sorted them by age just to give the public a better sense of where the oldest structures are versus the newest structures. The survey identifies properties going back to 1820, all the way to 1993. And so one of the things the planning board discussed was why is a structure from 1993 on the Historic Resource Survey? So Wake County envisioned this to be the very last update of this survey. And so they wanted to include any of the properties that may potentially 30, 40 years from now be of a historic resource to the town. So what this list helps us with is it helps us identify potential properties. If a property owner comes in and wants to develop their property or convert a house into a business, we can more easily identify that that property may be historic. We can then reach out to Capital Area Preservation, who is our Historic Resource Consultant. And they can help us identify whether or not this house or this structure is truly a historic structure that should be saved, or if it's beyond repair, or if there's no historical significance to it whatsoever. So having a property on the resource inventory does not necessarily mean it is historic. It just means that it has the potential to be historic and we need to do a little bit more investigation. And here's the revised map that goes along with that list. As you can see, up in area one, the village district has a significant amount of those potential historic resources. But they are scattered throughout the town's jurisdiction, especially down towards the southern area. We kind of talked about what the planning board discussed already. One change that was made to the actual ordinance was in a different section, unrelated to historic preservation, but adding the word connected to encourage more connected communities. That was part of section four. So the planning board took the opportunity to make a change that they felt important. It was important while that was in front of them. And they do recommend approval 7-0. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Sean at this point, before we start with the public hearing? Nope, bring that? Okay. At this point in time, all public hearing, no one has signed up on 7E. So a close of public hearing and after further discussion or motion. Whichever you choose. Someone hit the motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution 18-26 to approve an act Comprehensive Plan Amendment, number 18 CPA 03.
Second.
Much may be made in second on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time IM 7F, public hearing, 18 CPA 04, vision Holly Springs, section one, future land use amendment. Melissa Sigmund, hi, Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for all the hearings you've had this evening. I will try to cover the topic briefly, although there's a lot of information. So please feel free to stop me if you have questions or would like additional information on any of the topics. So the focus of this plan is on the southern area, although it does expand beyond that for some of our modifications. And really, it does include changes both to the text and the future land use plan map. This is an outgrowth of the Southern Area Planning Initiative that's occurred over the past year in regards to impacts and growth in the southern area. So as, as you recall, that was, along processes is really the phase two. There were workshops conducted with the public that received a lot of feedback, as well as stakeholder interviews and a number of different feedback methods. The proposed changes that we have here are the result both of the public process as well as workshops with council, most recently in April of this year. We had that very in-depth conversation with you regarding some options for these changes and took all of that feedback, coalesced it into a map form, and then proceeded with our neighborhood outreach from there. So the, kind of the boiling down, all of that direction we received, we heard the desire to lower the density to a maximum of 2.5 units per acre overall or in general in most areas, as well as adding some additional categories for clarification and to refine the land use plan. Some additional minor cleanups have been done. In June, a couple of months following our, our workshop, we did have a neighborhood meeting, had a lot of turnout. The Holman Room was packed with over 80 people. We did receive 20 comment cards with a variety of comments and concerns, some in favor of the changes, others with particular concerns. Some of those individuals you'll hear from this evening. The proposed map changes are in, proposed to address some of the immediate concerns that we understand to be currently impacting residents. And as I said, focused on the southern area, but with some other areas touched in the greater town area. And as a reminder, in the current fiscal year budget, we do have our future land use plan update for a town-wide project, which would be a much larger scale of both public involvement, expected to be about a year-long project. So this is really a, an interim step before that larger plan. We said we have changes to the text in several sections, looking at both the future land use, community growth areas, as well as the details of the land use plan. Some map changes to both color, additional land use categories, some reductions as we. to both color, additional land use categories, some reductions, as we said, in terms of the density or intensity of uses. So again, some of the highlights, we got rid of the CGAs. We heard that was, there was a desire to remove those growth areas. We've identified schools and civic facilities, since they are very different than a residential development. We've added those various categories or gradations for some more refinement and nuance within our residential categories, and generally reduced the density within that southern area. So this is our current land use plan that we have today, just as a reminder, and this is, shows you a highlighted view of our current land use plan in the southern area, highlighting some of the details in terms of densities, as you can see with those community growth areas that we have today. And our proposed Future Land Use Plan, removing those growth areas, reducing the density, kind of changing from orange to yellow over a large majority of the southern area, adding the blue for our institutional uses, and taking down those CGAs and mixed-use areas with, replacing them with small neighborhood village centers. So some of those text amendments reflect those items that I just mentioned, removing the growth areas, revising our illustrations to make sure they generally reflect areas, and they're not specific to a particular intersection, or something of that nature. So you can see, basically, we've removed street names, that sort of thing. We've also removed the Southern Gateway Land Use Plan and incorporated it into the overall map, so we don't need to have an extra map anymore. It's right in with our proposed Future Land Use Plan. Getting more into the meat of some of the changes, really, the Section 18 is where we talk about the land use map, as well as describing those categories. So this shows the proposed land use plan, as well as the variety of densities for the different categories, the major categories. We've got the residential outside of a growth area from the, actually, this is actually, apologies, yes, the residential. We've got the new rural residential at the 1 to 2.5, and our existing low-density residential as well. So the rural residential category is the category we discussed in great detail during our workshop, and was looking at that 1 to 2.5 units per acre, so having a, something a little bit lower than the current residential category that was over much of that plan area. So this was conservation-focused, looking at maintaining some of the unique landscapes particularly found in the southern area. And this was the conversation we had about, you know, should it be 2, should it be 2.5? And per discussion with council, we've created this designation that goes from 1 to 2.5, consistent with many of our developments within the southern area, and consistent with existing development patterns. Continuing on, you can see our school sites are shown in blue. As I mentioned, we know that these function very different than residential developments, since we want to call attention to those uses, as well as our civic facilities, such as Town Hall, where we are this evening, our Cultural Arts Center, Ting Park, et cetera. We also have modified, as I mentioned, the categories that were in that Southern Gateway area, near our large regional commercial centers, incorporating it into this plan, and so we've carried those categories over. So you can see, we're replacing the Southern Area Plan, our Southern Gateway Plan, and we are incorporating it right into this plan. So that's where you're seeing these color changes and these new categories that existed in the Southern Gateway Plan. We're incorporating them in so that you can get a holistic picture with one map document. So Neighborhood Village Centers are what you see in the pink areas. These are intended to be small-scale neighborhood commercial locales that would provide for everyday amenities and needs, and ensure that there are some commercial resources within the community, so folks don't have to go all the way to a big-box store if they just want a gallon of milk. And those are all located in our former CGA locations, so you can see, we really just took the heart or the core of those existing CGAs, shrunk them down, and placed these right at the intersections. These are areas of existing non-residential zoning as well, so we're reflecting our existing zoning, as well as the existing Southern Gateway Plan. There was quite a bit of Planning Board discussion on this item. As you can imagine, we talked about quite a bit. Some of their concerns are boiled down and listed on the screen here in terms of the impacts of this reduction in density, some questions regarding the reasoning behind this. It was explained that this was considered, as I mentioned, a bit of a stopgap or interim measure. They also indicated questions or concerns that this plan may not be needed, in that the properties would require rezoning in general within the southern area, and could offer conditions limiting density voluntarily. They also brought up the possibility of combining the rural and transitional designations to create kind of a larger category. From our discussion, we had already kind of combined two categories to get to that rural residential, but there was some thought that we could create a category that went up to 6 units per acre, so they did bring up that. In addition, one of the things that you'll find in your packet that was part of the Planning Board staff report was a request from a number of property owners regarding the designation of their particular property located, their properties are located near Avant Ferry Road and Logging Road. Their concerns were in regards to the designation of their property's rural residential, and they were making a request that the proposal be changed to transitional. With that, the Planning Board did discuss concerns regarding how that would impact those particular property owners with the rural residential designation, and so that was part of the discussion as well. You will hear from some of those representatives of those landowners as well with maps showing their particular properties, and they'll discuss their concerns in greater depth. In addition, there was also a discussion regarding the coordination of vehicular and pedestrian access. Right now, we mention it in one of our land use categories. There was the thought that perhaps we should have a note to that effect in all of our categories as a, kind of a side to that. It may have been added to the particular category as of regional centers due to the unique nature of those facilities. It does not mean that we do not consider that a value overall. However, it was specified based on that particular land use. However, the Planning Board did have comments that perhaps that should be discussed throughout all of our different definitions of our land use categories. And we do have our Planning Board Representative, Sean McGrath, if you'd like to discuss any of those items in greater depth.
Question? Yes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, come on up again. Double your salary on this one.
Went from zero to zero.
That's right.
Awesome. What I would like to do first and foremost is thank the participation we had from the community. So that was a nice add to the Planning Board, to actually get input before, so we can actually make a better informed advisement to the Town Council, so we certainly appreciated that. So when there are issues in the future that come up, or you feel passionate about that, then please come to the Planning Board and talk to us, because we do consider these things, and then provide our input to the Town Council, so that was very helpful. As well, we had Councilman Kelly there to help us understand some of these things a little bit more, so that was helpful overall. What I would comment on, in addition to what Melissa just described there, the rationale for kind of the 1 to 6 transitional there is to not dissuade some of the other comments that have been made tonight, to not dissuade economic development in that area. So we're looking at things like the southern bypass that go through that area. If we limit ourselves to 1 to 2.5 units per acre down there, then we may dissuade someone who was coming in there with a large planned development of up to 6 units per acre, to help us build that tax or economic basis there, to help with that southern bypass. So that was, kind of that recommendation for a potential combination of those, to go 1 to 6 instead of 1 to 2.5. That's an expectation. This is a future land use plan. This is not what we're going to approve, because all those properties right now down there are all R-30. They're all gonna have to come forward to the Planning Board and to Town Council for rezoning at some point down the future, but our thought process was to not dissuade them. In all honesty, I was one of the dissenting votes of the 5 to 2 vote that the Planning Board took, and the other dissenting vote, along with my opinion, was also with the homeowners on Logging Road there, that you'll probably hear from tonight as well, to not change that future land use, to prevent them from potentially having that same economic development opportunity in the future by having that rural residential rather than a transitional applied to their properties for future use. That was the gist of it.
Are there questions or comments? Thank you again, Sean.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So that clarifies, as Sean mentioned, regarding the Planning Board's recommendation. So it was 5-2. In addition, there was a second motion also made that was unanimous in regards to adding those additional statements. So as I mentioned, in terms of adding the requirement of adequate roads in all land use categories, that was a recommendation by the Board in addition. And with that, I could take any questions? Otherwise, we do also have two written comments from members of the public that you'll have received.
I think you all have the one from JB Wright. That's the one I have, correct? Do I have that one?
Yep.
Yep.
I just have one copy. Can you get this? Was the other one on the airside? Oh, I see. I have both. Thank you. Any other comments of Melissa at this point, before we open the public hearing? No? Thank you. At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask you a favor. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 signed up. If you can try to keep your comments to three minutes each, or close, I appreciate it. So the first person we'll call up in order is Nicholas Thornton, who signed up first. Oh, Nick. Just for the record, name and address, please.
All right. Everybody hear me okay? Name's Nicholas Thornton, 7000 Cass Holt Road. I'm the plant manager of the Lehigh-Hanson operation out there. Some of the, I guess the things we wanted to bring to light was regarding the changes to the industrial piece out there, to the rural residential. Right now, we have four parcels on the northern side of our property that we have options to purchase pending our due diligence, that we will use in our future kind of land plan for our company as overburdened storage, so basically it'd be buffer. These areas total up to about 150 acres on the northern side of the property. As far as, like I said, the buffer is concerned, we would store overburden there, so material that we strip from the top of our operation, we would use to build vegetated berms, so not only a visual barrier for our operation, but audible barriers as well, especially because there's gonna be, there's gonna be an influx of people to the southern side of the town. We, you know, kind of feel like it fits with the spirit of the proposal, as far as, you know, lowering the density in the area, and certainly the intensity, because our, again, our purpose will be, you know, strictly for a storage of a, you know, just a dirt material. We don't have any plans to develop it, and it's not in our plan to develop it into any active operating areas for that concern. And we just ask if it's possible to maybe amend the current proposal, to include that, you know, that piece as a, still under the industrial portion that it is right now under the current land use plan, and if it's not possible to amend it, if it's possible, maybe to table the vote on it until we can kind of come forward to you with our plan and a little more information on it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Next is Anya McGurk, I think, am I right? And again, name and address, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Anya McGurk. I live at 1212 Happy Hunting Hills Drive, just down the road here. I'm here tonight representing eight families from Happy Hunting Hills subdivision. We own approximately 75 acres of land. Our land is not in Holly Springs Town. We are in ETJ of Holly Springs. We're often referred to as the Donut Hole, because we're surrounded by Holly Springs on all sides. Approximately 2/3 of our land is currently designated as residential right now, which allows for 2 to 8 houses per acre. The other third is actually in the community growth area that's proposed to be eliminated, so it actually allows for even higher density. Oh, yeah, thank you. I haven't started yet, though. And it is past my bedtime, so I'm gonna be quick. Tonight, we're here to ask for two things. One is to either keep our current residential designation, which allows for 2 to 8 units per acre, or if you're gonna pass the proposed land use plan, to designate our land as transitional residential, allowing for 2.6 to 6 units per acre. Pictures are worth 1,000 words, so we thought we'd show you some pictures outlined in yellow. Oh, actually, first, I wanted my neighbors all to stand up. We're all here tonight, so I'm speaking on their behalf.
Our neighbors.
And included in there are ex-Town Councilmen and born and bred Holly Springs, which they're rare breeds.
I know who that is.
Okay, so anyway, back to our pictures. This is an outline of all our properties. The total property is now outlined in red. So just to illustrate where we are, I'm just gonna show you the neighborhoods. So hopefully, you know where we are now. We have Holly Glen to the, whatever direction that is. I'm dyslexic, especially after my bedtime. Holly Glen, down at the bottom, Autumn Park, Morgan Park. And in addition to these neighborhoods, we have, there's a plot of land that's designated R-10 already, and to the south of Mr. Ridley's property is another R-10 designation. In terms of commercial lots that surround us, we of course have the big Walmart, Harris Teeter, CBS, Goodwill, my favorite shopping place. Sheets is coming in, and there's three other lots that are designated as commercial. We don't know what they are yet. And just to give you some perspective, here are the schools, and here's where we are tonight. So here's the proposed land use plan, and outlined in red again is our land. So you can see, it's quite a picture. We have all kinds of noise everywhere. The first thing I wanted to bring your attention to is Holly Glen and Braxton. It's colored yellow, which would be rural residential, but we actually just sampled a couple of the lots, and they're all 0.25 on average acres, which would be 4 per acre. So I'm not exactly sure why it's colored rural. Maybe the gross area originally. So anyway, it's 4 units per acre, so it's really not yellow in my mind. It doesn't really matter anyway, but it's small lots. So what we're gonna do is we just color it a slightly different orange, because it's, just to show you that it's...
How did you do that?
If you know Glenn Walker, who used to be around here in Holly Springs, he's our key man. And what we're asking you tonight is to make us transitional residential. And I also wanted to point out, if we were really good at PowerPoints, we would've colored in this lot right here, because it's already zoned R-10, which is 4 units per acre, and this lot right down here is also R-10, 4 units per acre. So if you just take a look at this picture, just take it in, you can see, we really are surrounded completely by all kinds of things. We have our industrial land at the top in blue. We have the light blue water treatment plant, which by the way, we don't smell, because it's way, we're way up the hill from it. We have the other institutional stuff, which is the schools. We have the old commercial, now it's called Neighborhood something, Neighborhood, oh, Gathering or something, no, I don't know. Sheets. Sheets and other things coming in, and we have our regional centers and our big... So I think if you just look at this picture and study it, I think it's pretty clear that rural designation of this land outlined in red really doesn't make that much sense, at least to us, particularly considering the current designation. So next, I wanted to show you just a couple pictures. Pictures say 1,000 words. These are our new neighbors. We fought hard to stop Morgan, what's it called, Morgan Parker Park, coming in, but it came in, and so now we have this great view. But the thing is, we have this kind of view on every, we're surrounded by development everywhere, Holly Glen, Braxton, et cetera. And personally, I can see why people living all around us in the developments would like to keep us rural, but it just doesn't, whoops, sorry, I went too far. It just doesn't really seem fair to restrict us to the 1 to 2.5 acres when we're completely surrounded by high-intensity development on all sides and commercial zoning. And now I'd like to invite Robert, oh, sorry. I need to go to bed.
You can sit in my chair for a minute. You can sit in my chair for a minute. I think I've got that one down. But thank you.
I'm done.
I will call Robert Forkum.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We need to get another chair up here.
Good evening. My name is Robert Forkum. My address is 1001 Logging Road. My wife and I own 10 and a half acres within the ETJ of Holly Springs. We've lived here since 1997. My neighbors and I live in the Happy Hunting Hills subdivision on Logging Road and Happy Hunting Hills Trail. Many of them have lived here for 10 to 15 years. Ray and Pam Thaxton, the former, Ray, former town council member, has lived there for 33 years. One of the property owners purchased their property in 1976. Collectively, we own 74 acres. And again, this land is not within the town limits of Holly Springs. Somehow, we missed out on the opportunities to provide feedback on the Southern Area Planning Initiative last year, but we did receive the notice about the June 7 Future Land Use Plan Meeting. And most of us attended that event and we learned about the proposal to change our property designation to rural residential. This is a dramatic change in designation and does not accurately reflect our surroundings. According to the handout provided at the June 7 meeting, the current designation for our properties are rural, or excuse me, residential at two to, two to eight units per acre. And as Anya said, about one-third of our acreage lies within a community growth area, providing up to 15 units per acre. On June 18th, our group of landowners met with Planning Director Gina Clapp and Melissa Sigmund to discuss how our properties might be excluded from the new designation. We talked about developer interest in our properties and tried to identify how the town might benefit if our properties were sold to a developer and annexed by the town. We also met with and had similar discussions with each town member. As you can see, we are willing to work with the town in a spirit of cooperation and we appreciate the town's willingness to hear our concerns regarding the proposed change in land use designation. However, the proposed designation is already harming the valuation of our property and will impact our ability to sell to a developer. Developers have told us it is not advantageous to develop at these low densities. We have met with multiple developers and there is currently interest in our property, but it may diminish or disappear based on the land use designation. With a designation of 2.5 units per acre, it may make more sense for us to sell to individual homebuyers and remain outside the city limits of Holly Springs. However, if we sell to a developer, the town will have the ability to influence how the property is developed. The town is interested in connecting subdivisions with greenways, introducing bike trails, and preserving stands of trees. Potentially, our property offers that. Maybe Holly Glen could be linked to Morgan Park by forested greenway. Maybe part of the property could become a bike trail. However, if we individually sell our properties to another homeowner, our property remains private, outside the city limit, and off limits to the public. So we believe there are three things to be true. The new designation fails to accurately reflect the reality of our current surroundings. It unfairly harms the valuation of our properties. And potentially, there are valuable benefits to the town under a transitional designation. A designation of transitional is accurate and appropriate for our properties. We therefore request our properties be designated transitional or that the existing land use designations remain in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it. Bye, Robert. Now Craig Schreiner, I think. All right. Craig? And again? Schneer. All right. First, Nancy Voss is talking to me.
My name's Craig Schneer. Me and my wife are here. We've been in Holly Springs for all of about 18 months. We live in Oliver Creek at 5516 Voorhees Lane. So it's odd, I didn't think I was even going to come up here and have any conversation, period. But, you know, look and see who's talked and what's been said and what's been discussed. And, you know, we, we came here, we're North Carolina natives, of course, but we just don't want to have too much change of, like, I've looked at Ava Sett, the neighborhood behind ours, and it's the cookie cutter homes, just like the ones on the screen, but even, you know, more in a, in one acre. And it's just tough seeing them plowing down 40 acres of trees with 200, you know, 300-year-old oaks. And it's, you know, beautiful land turned into house farms. And the concern was just rezoning, you know. It's, I've seen 2.5 acres or two houses per acre. And, you know, I know some people want more houses per acre. And it's just, it's concerning the amount of growth. I know we're looking for economy to come here. But, you know, there's just concern of we're overdeveloping in such a small, you know, in a short time and the infrastructure's struggling. You know, traffic's already bad. Sitting on 55 on the way home, I'm a superintendent for a construction company and we love to build. You know, that's what we do. But when you see it around you in your home, it's scary. So that's kind of, that's all. Wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Lisa Powell.
Hey, Mayor, I didn't get to sign up before the truck. If I signed up for this one, it doesn't...
I'm sorry?
They pulled the plate before I could sign. I doubt it. The agendas were gone. I wouldn't sign up for this one as well.
Well, you did.
When I think of the agenda, the agendas were all taken.
All right, then it's not, you want to sign up for this, you said? We'll work it. Thanks.
Good evening, council. My name is Lisa Powell. I live at 7009 Roush Road, Holly Springs. I was born and raised in Holly Springs, have been here my entire life with the exception of two years that I lived in Raleigh. My mother and I own almost 200 acres in Holly Springs in total. And the reason that I am up here tonight is how you are proposing to rezone some property that we own on Rex Road. About nine or 10 months ago, we started a meeting with you guys, with your staff, to, to discuss some options that, well, some ideas that we had about using the property. And we were given this map. And if you see this purple area, this is where Rex Road is. This is where our property is. And we were told that this, the future land use of this was industrial. And we have had multiple meetings and we have learned that you guys wanted less density, that you wanted less traffic. And as a result, we have gone under contract with this property to Hanson, which needs for it to be zoned industrial. We have spent many months. We have hired two attorneys and have spent lots of money making sure that these contracts were up and up and as they should be. And now suddenly, we have become aware that you wanting to change this from industrial to residential. And that's a problem, to say the least. As I said, we spent all these months consulting with you guys, what our plans were, what you needed, what you wanted. And suddenly, we're under contract and we potentially could lose our contract. I think we have 114 acres there. And of the 114, 87 are currently under contract with Hanson. This contract gives Holly Springs everything that you guys told us that you wanted. You wanted the no density, you wanted the no traffic. What they are wanting to use it for is, is storage. They're going to put the buffer. You get to keep the trees, you keep, get to keep the scenery, the beauty of it. So I'm just really confused why you want to change this, increase your density, increase your traffic. It, it is the opposite of what you told me in all of our meetings. Let's see. I guess my question is, would you want to buy or build your home and your neighbor be a rock quarry? I personally would not want my home to be built with the rock quarry being my neighbor. They're great. They're a great company. But the blasting and that type thing, I do not think would be beneficial to a residential neighborhood. There is no rock on this property. They have tested it. It cannot be used for mining rock. They simply want it for storage. There again, no density, no traffic. It makes no sense that you would change this to residential. Also, this property has a huge draw. It has a really bad drop going right through the middle of the property that you would not be able to cross for residential purposes. There again, it makes no sense that it be zoned residential. I feel, I'm like, I'm with Mr. Holt. I feel like if you guys would have reached out to us, we could have educated you better on why this property should not be residential, why it should maintain the, your initial zoning as industrial. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, do, name and address, please.
Mayor, thank you for letting me back up. Wayne Holt, 205 South Dixon Avenue, Cary, North Carolina. I want to touch a little bit on the 2.5 homes per acre. I think what the general public does not understand is that you don't get an acre of land and put 2.5 houses on it or two acres with five houses. I think that's what most of the general public believes. When they look at this and they read, they come to these public hearings, they don't understand that that's not really what happens. If you've got 10 acres, you can get 25 houses on there if that's the zoning. But with the 20% trees, with the buffers that are already required, with the road dedications, with the sidewalk dedications, et cetera, et cetera, we end up with much smaller lots, much tighter houses, six feet apart. That's what we end up with here. I was in a, I guess, a community meeting last week for the property that's going to be, that's actually trying to go through you guys right now with the farm out on Cass Holt Road where the horse farm once was, and I guess still is. And the planner for that was talking about what they have had to do already. And I think that at one point, there was some conversation about existing projects in the pipeline that would be grandfathered in. And that's not the case here. And they were talking about how they had already gone from these 10,000 square foot lots, that by the time they add 20% trees with the required trees that were already on it, with the required buffers, they're probably going to have with 5,000 square foot lots. A 10,000 square foot lot is slightly less than a quarter acre. A 5,000 square foot lot is just, just tiny. And I think that you as elected officials, a lot of this has started out of Facebook groups, complaints, phone calls. A small, a small minority of the people who live in Holly Springs come out to vote, number one, they are the loud majority, the loud minority. And you as elected officials have caved to this small minority without bringing in the stakeholders. You brought in, back to 7D, four land planners. You didn't reach out to the homeowners association. You didn't reach out to the developers. What we have created, as the gentleman who spoke out of order earlier after this 7D conversation, you have created an environment that is going to push guys like me, high-end, small custom builders who build quality homes. You're going to push us out of Holly Springs. I started here. I've built in Holly Springs since I started. There's never been a time I wasn't building in Holly Springs. You're going to push us out. What you have created is a great market for Polte, for Lennar. And I love those guys. I'm personal friends with a lot of those people that work there. But is that what you want your town to be, is only Polte, Lennar? Drive through Morrisville, that's what they have. And it's not a pretty picture. It's not a pretty sight. And I don't think that, as a Holly Springs native with family roots here for 91 years, I don't believe that's what I want. I'm not opposed to what you guys are doing. I'm opposed to how you got there and the lack of input that you did not get. Back to 7D, you talked yourselves out of tabling that and bringing in some additional stakeholders. You, you gave us, you cut something out on it that really is not even the issue. Developers can pay that. Those big guys, they can pay that. Small guys like me, we're not, number one, we're not going to make that mistake. We're not going to cut that tree down because we probably aren't going to be here building because we can't afford to build. Your fees are the highest in the county. Your fees just went up yet again. You're pushing us out. That's, that's not really, I think, what all of you want. The lots your homes are on, there were trees that were cut down. There are going to be trees cut down for anywhere we build a house. I just think that you've caved to a small minority and, you know, public officials change. The council will change. The previous council got voted out over people screaming and crying and hollering over traffic on Avant Ferry Road, traffic on Pine Grove Wilbon Road. I spoke with a developer last week at length who's doing a project in Harnett County, near the intersection of Pine Grove Wilbon, Rawls, and 401. They had to do a very extensive traffic study. That traffic study said that 50% of the vehicles going north on 401 turn left on Pine Grove Wilbon Road. You know where they go? They come right through Holly Springs, they turn on Roush Road and go Cass Holt to Rex to get to the park. Or they continue through, they turn on Avant Ferry and do the same thing, or they go up and jump on the bypass. The residence and the development of Holly Springs is not what has created the bottleneck. That is not the issue here. We are looking at outsiders who have created the traffic problems that they started screaming about, and we now have what we have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we're going to close the public hearing and back to Melissa. Any further comments? All set?
With that, we, we have suggested motions, if you'd like to make one.
Further conversation from the board, based upon maybe some of that information or not.
Can you go over the reasoning behind changing the zoning that was previously industrial to?
So just to clarify, no zoning has been changed tonight. All of the changes proposed are simply to the comprehensive plan. And for clarification, the comprehensive plan is a vision document. It provides guidance for rezoning petitions. It does not change anyone's entitlement or the rights that they have to their current zoning. However, in regards to the concern with the change in land use, future land use designation for the industrial properties, my understanding is that the current infrastructure, or infrastructure was not expected to be brought to that area that would support additional industrial uses. I believe that was done earlier in the process. I understand that that particular property owner may have been involved in discussions very early on. But I believe that was earlier in the Southern Area Planning Initiative, a decision that was made. So it was based on the totality of the circumstances in that area. So it would not preclude a rezoning application, however. They could still make a petition to rezone that property to industrial as it is not currently industrially zoned.
Go back just a little bit for me. You lost me at the part of they way back when type of thing.
Okay.
Can you tell me that one again?
So my understanding, it sounds as though the conversations that they had with staff began quite some time ago.
Right.
I was not involved in any of the initial conversations, so I don't know firsthand when that began. However, I believe that the, with the SAPI, the Southern Area Planning Initiative, draft maps that have been produced along the way, my understanding is that the decision to reduce the size and scale of the industrial was done early on in that conversation. conversation. Um, and so, it may be the case that they came in and spoke with staff, um, before those decisions have been made, but as we know, that process went on for a number of months as well. So, in the, the interim, um, that may have occurred. I, I was not, um, privy to those specific conversations, so I can only speculate, um, as to the timing of everything that occurred. So, this is, while this is not a, um, a very recent decision in my understanding, it was done, as I said, based on the totality of the circumstances. Just like any other property, however, it does not preclude a property owner from coming in and requesting of the council to rezone their property, even if it's not, the request is not in conformance with this new plan. They still have that ability, and you as council still have the right to consider and approve that rezoning.
So, just to clarify, right now, that property that we discussed, two of them, of course, Nick Wilson, I think it was, uh, that is now zoned residential?
My understanding-
As far as we know?
My, as far as I'm aware, I believe that it's currently zoned R-30 residential.
R-30 residential. And if I owned that property and I had some contracts out and I wanted to go back to, if I didn't go there in the first place, maybe, I don't know, uh, I'm confused, then they would have to come back in and ask for a rezoning? Is that correct?
Correct. So, if the property is not currently industrially zoned, regardless of the comprehensive plan, land use designation, it would still require coming before council with the rezoning.
So, no matter how goes tonight?
The quarry may have to come back and rezone that anyway, regardless of what the future land use-
That's why I thought.
Yeah.
If they're gonna, if, if that use is calling for, you know, industrial zoning district, they're gonna have to come and do that anyway.
Right. Further comments, counselor?
Yeah, but, I mean, as it was described, if it's a storage for filter area, you probably don't need a industrial use rezoning anyways. But that's-
Help me with that.
They need to go through the zoning application process in order for the town to determine what they need. But that's not where they're at right now.
And the future land use plan wouldn't impact the, the contract for sale, correct?
That's correct. Well, I don't know. I don't know what their contract looks like. It could, their contract could say, you know, we must be in conformance with the, it's unlikely. It's just, usually the real estate sales contracts require, um, that the seller ensure that the, um, entitlements are all there for the town. So, either the seller or the buyer would have to come and get a rezoning. Either way, regardless of what happened tonight, a rezoning would have been necessary. So, your comp plan designation really doesn't change what the steps that they would have taken.
Okay, I think.
I, I mean, it, it, yeah, I think it's important that we, we did hear, uh, Ms. Horton, Ms. Powell talk about that, so we know that there is a plan out there.
The motions before us tonight, those are, do they include what the, the other group of, uh, folks want as transition?
Councilman Rattelli, it does not. So, that would be something the council could choose on any one of the, the public requests to modify the comprehensive plan. We would ask if you are looking to make a, a change to the map for clarity's sake, it may be best to direct staff to make those changes and bring that back, um, table the discussion and bring that back to, um, the next council meeting, so that we can verify that the map is accurate and reflects exactly what you're looking to do. Um, just because the nature of a map, it's a little difficult to discuss in a, a amended ordinance or amended motion.
I think I'd like to do that. I think I'd like to table that.
Okay, and to, um, what kind of discussion for the staff?
Yep.
I mean, to talk about the transitional to-
Trying to clarify both of these, we're kind of semi-open, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're doing this right. We can always change it, but I want to make sure we're doing it right.
So, is my understanding that the council would direct staff to modify the map for both the industrial area as well as the, the request for the transitional residential? Or would the council like further discussion on the matter?
I think that was it, right?
I think we should discuss it. I mean, does that, does that mean you're willing to accept one to six units per acre on those properties at the intersection of, it's like the old, right down from Pine Grove and Avant Ferry?
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, we're setting this plan up to be what our vision is for the future, right? So, if we don't see ourselves going to up to six units per acre on those properties, why change the plan? That's what I struggle with. I personally don't see myself supporting something that high at that location.
Well, again, I think it's that, that 2.5 is kind of a basis there, right? And that's, you know, we can, we can tweak that. Um, and that's what I think the residents need to know, as well as builders, is that it's not a hard 2.5, right?
It isn't, it isn't now. That's, I guess that's my point. We're, we're looking for more flexibility in the plan. So, if it says 2.5, if they come in for R-10, that allows up to 3.25 units per acre. So, you could have somebody come in on the 75 acres, ask for 3.25 under an R-10 designation. The future land use plan is just our consideration to whether or not we think that project at 3.25 is consistent with our plan. So, that's another decision. It's not stopping them from coming in-
Right.
At R-8 or R-10.
Right.
It's just giving guidance to the development community on what we think we're willing to approve.
Right.
For that reason, you know, my, my opinion, right, if, if we've, if we could put it to a vote whether or not we want to amend it, I just don't see six as the right answer for that location. Maybe there's another happy-
We really don't know until they actually bring it to us, so you really don't know.
But we would want to direct them on what that should be, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I thought was on the table now.
So, I, you know, I, I did a little bit of research in all the neighborhoods that have been talked about in terms of densities and so forth. I pulled plans and looked at what was approved, the acreage and, and the actual densities. And, and I'm just gonna run down a little bit of a list, because I think it helps give a, a, a bit of reality to what we all see out there. So, the overlook at Holly Glen is 2.48, the Highland at Holly Glen is 2.55, Garrison 2.27, Sutton Place 2.41, Trotter Bluffs 1.75, Morgan Park is actually 1.95, given its entire, uh, land. Wildwood 2.16, Honeycutt 2.61, and then, and then Autumn Park stands out at 3.88. During the SAPI process, where they analyzed the entire area of, um, that southern area, when you looked at what was zoned as R-10, which allows up to 3.25, the, the actual precedent, meaning what was actually allowed, or not allowed, but ultimately approved and, and billed to, was 2.66. So, there's not a whole lot out there that is way above what we say is 2.5. I mean, it is, 2.5 is pretty consistent with what's already out there in, in actuality.
I think it's just perception of what they're thinking, that they're stuck on that 2.5 and, and there's, is, there's more to that 2.5.
Yeah, I, I mean, Mr. Holt spoke to it beautifully, right? You have five acres, it doesn't mean you put 2.5 times five, right? I mean, that, that's-
Doesn't fit.
There's a gross density, which is how all these plans we create, that's how we evaluate them, is based on gross density. And you won't find a stronger proponent for net density than me, which is actually what, what you feel in your backyard, all those houses is what is net density after you take the whole thing and how many are on that. You know, you go and count four lots at a quarter acre, that's really your net and not your gross density. But unfortunately, when we look at these projects, it's not how they're measured. So, what we have to do, it, it, I, I agree with Councilman Vilson, the numbers just don't support a higher designation on those parcels. I, I, I clearly understand the argument for, for the net density piece of it, that's just not how, how we're evaluating it.
All right, where are we?
I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, discussing this a little bit further, and, and I actually have not, I, I'm not keen on the, the labeling as rural residential. I mean, that sounds almost less dense than low density. I think in, in the workshop, we had, at one point, you used suburban residential, which I think is probably a more accurate term. So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy to discuss this a little bit further and see if there are, uh, some options that are, you know, more conducive to the, the folks who live over in Happy Hunting and clear up some of the language. But I, I just wanted to, you know, let people know that when we're talking about the, the gross density of a lot of these, these neighborhoods, they aren't threes, you know, threes and fours and, and so forth. Even Morgan Park, which looks like it would be four plus, given its entire land use or, or land area, is, is half that.
Right, I mean, they're not looking at open area, right? Trees and, my recommendation is maybe we table this to clarify that transition, yeah, correct.
I think that's smart. I, I think, based upon a lot of different things, it's probably time to try to resolve both of those two issues that are on the table. And if there's anything else that comes to mind, uh, we're gonna just say yes or no at this point in time. I, I think there's enough there that, uh, and I've heard enough that, uh, we should take a look at that. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Makes sense?
Do you agree? You agree?
All right, okay, let's do that. Want to do the motion?
Yep. Um, at this point, we will, uh, table motion, resolution 18 dash 27, uh, to the next town meeting. Is that sufficient?
Yeah.
Which would be, uh, August the 7th.
Second?
I heard a second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Melissa. We'll wait for a second.
We did, we, yeah, we need to do a little bit more of the dialogue. I think so.
Thank you.
Agenda item 8A.
Oh, yeah, Dan.
Consent agenda. Uh, we'll wait for a minute. I know, I know. We'll get there. Maybe Dan went home. No, he didn't. There he is. All right. Consent agenda, Mayor Portem.
Uh, motion to, uh, approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And now, let's see. Agenda item 9A, new business, Holly Springs Road widening survey, town of Holly Springs, 18001, Mary DePino. Thank you for waiting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess they didn't know you guys saved the vest for last.
Yeah.
Okay, so, talk about Holly Springs road widening. As a reminder, we were awarded $2.5 million by Campo for construction and right-of-way with an 80/20 cost split. There are some strict guidelines and timeframes associated with the project, and, um, we need to be, we need to obtain construction funding authorization by September 30th, 2019. So, construction funding authorization includes right-of-way acquisition, which cannot begin until roadway alignment has been finalized. So, um, you know, beginning design immediately is vital to the success of the project and remaining eligible for reimbursements from NC DOT. So, following a comprehensive and competitive solicitation process, engineering has chosen Kimley Horn to lead the design of the project. And, um, the project manager, Chad Beck, is here with us this evening. Um, so, we're asking council to award the design contract to Kim, to Kimley Horn Associates and approve funding in the amount of $540,980,000. And with that, are there any questions?
Is there any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about what's in that?
Sure. Um, that includes everything associated with the designing the project from, um, environmental documentation. Um, they will present us with three different alternates in order to minimize the right-of-way impacts that will be, you know, caused by the widening of the project, of the road, Holly Springs Road. It includes a lot of public interaction and meetings and, um, I don't know, you want, yes, or? Add anything?
How many miles of roadway are we talking about here?
We're talking about, about .7 miles. But it's a, it's a complicated section, because it meanders, the, the cross-section meanders, and so on, on, you know, in a normal project, you have two tie-in points at each end. Well, this one, you're gonna have several different tie-in points, and, you know, I think I might let Chad speak to that a little bit more.
My name is Chad Beck. I'm a roadway project man, roadway engineer, project manager for Kimley Horn Associates, worked with the town on several projects over the past couple of years. So, um, good evening, Mayor and Council, appreciate this opportunity. Um, the scope, uh, the scope of services includes what would be for a standard roadway project, um, what they call a LAP project, a locally administered project with NC DOT, and that's what is, some of the, I guess, what is required as part of acquiring that funding, um, the $2.5 million that Mary mentioned. Um, this will include all of the environmental permitting for the project. Um, so there are some investigations in the field for environmental factors, um, human factors, cultural factors, whatnot, and make sure that we're not impacting those adversely. Um, it'll also include roadway design. And as Mary alluded to, it's a very interesting section of highway. There are actually six different, uh, typical sections out there today, so it's kind of how do we make this four-lane section fit in with all of those different sections and maintain, utilize existing infrastructure that's out there today. Uh, it also includes, um, significant, um, outreach to the public. There are three schools along the project corridor, there's a fire station along the corridor, and a police department. Uh, there's a very critical infrastructure for the town, so this will include reaching out to them, letting them know about the project as well. Um, there's utility coordination, um, and then also, once we get into construction, some coordination to assist the town with that as well.
And we will have a opportunity to review the design when that's done, is that correct?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Probably asked the wrong person, okay. And it comes from street preserve, or reserves, right? Let's see.
Well, there's, there's an 80-
No, we got a grant.
Yeah.
We got a grant.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so sorry.
This contract does, but the funding is-
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Very good. It's late.
It's late.
Kendra, when we get our transportation engineer on board, how much of the scope of work here is something we could absorb in-house? None of it at all, or any portions of it?
Nothing within this, nothing that Kimley Horn would be doing is something that this transportation engineer would be doing. We don't have the software setup or any of the design components to take on, you know, the design per se. The transportation engineer would be managing several of these contracts. So, right now, we're absorbing the project management of this with existing staff, but if the bond goes through, and then we have, you know, right off the bat, six projects that we have to start managing, um, they're managing that, they're doing TIA, it's, that person's sole responsibility when they walk in the door every morning is transportation for Holly Springs. Today, we don't have that. We have a couple of different people that we're dividing that up amongst, um, the, the staff that we have. Um, so, having that transportation engineer is gonna help with project management, help projects stay on schedule. I don't foresee it being a bunch of in-house design. Um, we do have Mary and Dirk that do our in-house design, and we currently have over 60 projects that are ongoing right now. Not all of them are hard design, but it's, it's water, sewer, roads, sidewalks, greenways, um, and planning documents that are going on. Um, so we do need some help on the transportation, and we need, we're of a size now where we feel like, you know, we needed that focus. Um, one thing that Mary and Erin helped us with on this contract was understanding, um, we look at it on a cost per mile, and we looked at some of our older contracts and, you know, and applying a, um, inflation cost, you know, is this, yeah, it sounds like a lot of money, is it way out of line with what we've seen in the past for design costs? Um, it is a little bit higher, um, maybe by, it was probably like, I don't know, if it was five or 10% higher. But it was, in talking to Kimley Horn and Chad, it was, um, it's the complicated nature of this cross-section. But that was, it's, it's not, you know, outrageously higher than what we've paid in the past, is what, I guess, you know, we were-
And Kimley Horn was ultimately our choice, and there were a few factors that we considered. One of the factors is that they have a lot of experience with exactly this type of project. And also, we've worked with them in the past and currently, and we've had good experience with them too, as well.
And we also, the Mini Brooks Act precludes engineering and architect survey, and we can't price shop, so you have to do a strictly qualification-based selection. And then, once you go under contract with that engineering firm, you see the price, you see the man-hours, you can negotiate down, and then if you just still, if it's just too much money and you want to go to the second engineer, you have to, you know, the first one goes away, you go to the second one, you can negotiate with them, but you can't go back to the first one, because then that's price shopping. So it's a little bit different than, say, our construction projects, where it's the low bidder wins. This is by state law, we have to do qualification-based, which is what the process Mary was talking about, to get the qualifications and the selection.
Another thing I would like to mention is that there's a committee of people reviewing all of the, all of the submittals and making a comments, you know, and so we collectively come to the decision, it's not on any one person.
Okay, thank you, you answered my question.
Okay. Are there questions or comments? No? No?
Oops, too far.
Whoops, go back, there he is, you got it.
Motion to award the contract to Kimley Horn and Associates for engineering services and improve funding in the amount of $540,980.
Second.
Motion made, second all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is other business. I will say again, crosswalk safety, but I do have an announcement. Mr. Randy Harrington has been chosen and agreed to become our next town manager. He has extensive experience in the cities of Concord and Charlotte, and we have met with him through a process of starting, oh, I think we started with maybe 50, and cled it down to three or four, and then two, and then one. I will tell you this, I'm excited to have this gentleman come to our town, I'm very impressed with him, I think we all are, and that's what I got to say for the rest of the evening. Thank you. Who else? Anybody else?
I have a couple.
You might want to mention that your consultant called this council the hardest-working council in the selection process that he's ever seen, so-
That was, I was, it's on him. I was looking at. The executive search firm was developmental associates, and that's Stephen Strauss, PhD, and he told us that we're the best town he's ever worked with. Not quite in those words, but pretty darn close. Fair enough, John?
Like that y'all work very hard and very-
We are work very hard.
At very, long, long amounts. I've been on the council to select manager before, and we had to take half, we had to take a tenth amount of the time, as y'all did, so y'all need to be patted on your back by somebody.
Exactly. Good point, thank you, sir.
I can add a little bit more to-
Sure, go ahead.
-what he said, because I felt like that was, he went above and beyond in his description of the council, and I agree wholeheartedly that, that some of his observations, that we systematically discussed each candidate, we focused on data and behavior, everyone spoke about each candidate, when we spoke, we asked questions to elicit the perceptions of others, that we truly listened to one another, and we're open to each other's perspective. You were willing to change your decision based on the data others shared, and clearly valued one another and their view. For him, it was an incredible experience, and the next manager is coming into an outstanding situation.
Very good. Anybody else on that one? All said?
No?
Very good. Item number 10, manager's report. Hold on. Hope somebody else, I thought it was done, I'm sorry.
A couple things for new business, I did want to mention, I have the program from Hamm's funeral service-
Oh, yeah.
-that's really moving. And if I could read a little bit about, he has given so much to our town. The section here, Hamm decided to join the town council in 1981, he served in various capacities, sorry, I can't speak, including commissioner, mayor, Protam, and mayor for nearly 30 years. During this time, Hamm was instrumental in the growth of the town, driving to Washington, DC, as Gerald had said, to meet with legislatures, to secure grants, securing the land for Holly Ridge Elementary and Middle Schools, advocating for buying parkland. The advocated 46-acre parkland is named in his honor, Parish Wambel Park. So Hamm left a huge impression on our town, started many nonprofits, and he will definitely be missed.
Thank you. Thank you. Who else? Anybody else?
I just want to reiterate Councilwoman Kelly's remarks to staff earlier about the hard work that's gone into the three planning-related items we had, historical preservation, tree preservation, future land use plan. It's been a lot of hard work, I think, for all of our staff, all of us been involved in that process. You need, and probably in our opinion, needed changes. A lot of good work has been done to get us to this point, so thank you all, we're almost there, we're very, very close at this point, so thank you all for continuing to press on and work with us as we get through some of those items.
Okay, one more thing. To end on a positive note, not that we haven't been positive, but this is positive. I got an email from Betsy Masters, whom some of you know, some of you don't know, but it was a interesting email that a couple, that was coming from, I think it was Alabama or someplace like that.
Arizona.
Arizona, that's it, I think it was, the neighbor's right. That they researched every town on the eastern seaboard, and guess where they chose? But the reason I'm bringing this up is why they said they chose Holly Springs. It's a growing, vibrant economy. Holly Springs High School isn't capped, I love that one. Diversity in housing costs, safety, they have all studied, the Holly Springs Fire Department, the Holly Springs Police, websites, and remember a few names, and sender. Diversity of shopping, great neighborhoods, like many of us who moved here from larger cities, they think, they think there's no traffic and the roads are amazing. That's my point, and I quit on that point. Town manager, interim, sir.
Mayor and council, I'll be very brief, because I know everybody's tired. I thought you were gonna steal my thunder right there at the end. You failed to mention that homestnacks.net has named Holly Springs the fourth-best place to live in the state of North Carolina.
That's-
I'm not sure if that's something we want to tout "fourth-best" by homestnacks, but, you know.
Well, it's the same as last year, it's good.
Yeah, it is.
Home snacks did, they did cite our low unemployment rate and our high median income.
So just wanted to point that out, and also congratulate our Parks and Recreation staff, as well as police and fire also, for yet another great July 5th Independence-
Beautiful.
... celebration. I've heard a lot of positive feedback from that, but a lot of things go out to Adam Huffman and his team in Parks and Rec. I asked for an estimated attendance count, said roughly 10,000 visitors-
That's what I heard.
... visited the park.
Yes, sir.
So, that's all I've got, thank you.
That it? Councillor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we have a need for two, a closed session for two topics. One, to discuss with outside counsel, litigation in the current Builders Incorporated versus Town of Holly Springs, and that would be pursuant to 1433181A3. And then also to discuss an economic development incentive package for business recruitment in the, in one of the town's business parks pursuant to 1433181A4.
So move, councillor.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.